Good evening, and welcome to our collective committee meeting. At this particular meeting is when council takes care of the business of what's going to happen at the next meeting when we vote. There are no votes at this meeting, and there will be public input. It will be at the end of the meeting. That'll be the first time tonight. Second time tonight will be at the public hearing at the next meeting. You'll be able to speak on topics that are on the agenda, and I mean on that particular public hearing, which is the rezone. Then there will be another time for the public to speak at the beginning of that meeting, and then also at the end of that meeting. So I just wanted to let everybody know what's going to be happening. Between the two meetings, there will be a short break. If you'd like to have a convenience break, you can take one. The restrooms are cleared out at the end of the hallway. There's also drinking fountains here. Thank you. Welcome. The very first item on our agenda is Mr. Zubers. Can you take us through the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item we have is the donation of the three heavy-duty wagons from Hooks for Hunger to use at the fish cleaning station in Miller Road Park. This is a value of $540. Their gracious donation is from the Hooks for Hunger. I think everyone's familiar with that nonprofit charity that helps out CRS every year with their fishing tournament, I guess you would call it.
Thank you, Mr. Zubers. Any questions for Mr. Zubers on this item? Go ahead, Mr. Zubers.
All these items were passed out of the Finance Committee last Monday. I'll just add that. The next item is the budget adjustment. There is a memo from the Finance Director that was put out on the 28th today, talking a little bit about that. We went over all these different adjustments. Some of these were things that weren't in the budget, as we talked about earlier, for a budget for Environmental Affairs Advisory Board, fireworks, an additional monies for the job incentive program. We didn't budget enough money to cover that, which, as we discussed at the Finance Committee last week, it's a good thing, as that's a reimbursement to our businesses for the money that they have made from income tax. There's also adjustments on the Economic Development Fund. These are for reimbursable and non-reimbursable items dealing with legal in regards to the interim development agreement. And there is also additional monies, closing out a purchase that was for a grant that we did for a lease. Now we have to purchase the vehicle, and also additional monies for the asphalt and concrete inspection program.
Any questions for Mr. Zubers? Mrs. Crosby, I really like the change in the formatting that you have here. For the public, what she did was she expanded each of the items and gave us a history of what we originally passed, what was going to be changed, and what we are dealing with right now, and it made it much clearer. Thank you. Mr. Zubers, you have another item?
Yes, the next item is specifically, as it shows in the budget adjustment, the inspection services for asphalt and concrete street program. These are continuation of the initial contracts that we did have with Bramhall for their inspection services, and this is a continuation of those contracts. We have to appropriate more money because of their inspections for those two remaining, or what was remaining from last year's program that they're finishing up at this point in time in the asphalt and concrete street program.
Any questions for Mr. Zubers? Mr. Zubers, what is your intention? I'm going to go back to the budget adjustments.
Both of, all these are up for today. The donation from Hooks for Hunger is on for a motion. The budget adjustments are suspension of the rule, and also the inspection services are a suspension of the rule also.
Thank you, sir. Your next item?
The next item, I really don't have any information on, just that there was some discussion about this at the Finance Committee meeting. I don't know if we have any, we don't have anything, I believe, that we need to act on at this point in time.
Mr. Eber, do you want to speak to the military leave of absence?
There's no council action.
It's just an informational item?
It's an informational item concerning the enlistment of the individual. No council action is necessary. It has been done in the past, but the procedure's going to be changed as far as moving forward.
And do you want to explain to the public what we're talking about?
We haven't had the time to discuss it with the firemen, so I'd better not.
It's basically, it's a military leave.
It's a military leave, entered the military, one of firefighters, and how he is paid by the military versus paid by the state, by the city, I should say, and the benefits that he receives in the military versus the city. So it's just an issue, we've got a confined situation, which goes first.
Thank you very much. That's all I wanted, just to make sure you've been understood what we're talking about. Very good. Mr. Zubers, anything else that's on your agenda? Thank you. We're going to now move over to Mr. Smith with Human Resources Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. First item on the agenda tonight is the job descriptions for three positions in the Utilities Department. They've asked us to approve those for the professional engineer, a senior professional engineer, and a business development director. The job descriptions are in the agenda tonight, and the plan on that is to, at this point anyway, is to go forward with three readings.
Mr. Sir, go forward with?
Three readings.
Three readings, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, very good. And your next item?
In conjunction with that, not in the committee meeting, but in the, attached in the agenda, is the pay ranges for the future positions within the Utilities Department. They're changing the pay ranges for non-bargaining employees in the Avon Lake Regional Water. Again, you could see those pay ranges from chief executive to senior professional engineer, and they're attached to legislation 2589. Again, that's going to be three readings.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, your next item?
Next item is the job descriptions for the deputy clerk of court in the Avon Lake Municipal Court. The clerk's job description has changed a little bit. They've moved some things around in there. There's also going to be the appointment of a clerk of court and a bailiff this evening. The job description in the deputy clerk of court is going to be on a suspension of the rule, requiring three readings, and so that they can get all their changes in place if they need to, to have the court operate efficiently.
Right, and sir, I think it's important to mention that the salary is paid three fifths by the city and two fifths by the county.
Right, that's because there's three jurisdictions that are used the court services. Those are Avon, Avon Lake, and Sheffield Village.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Smith on this item? Mr. Smith, your next one?
The next one is the, I mentioned it shortly, was the, I lost my spot. What did I do with my, oh, here it is. Is the, I already covered the appointments of the clerks. That's going to be a suspension of the rules as well, to a point. Everybody's been aware of it, is Buddy Byers and then Michelle Parks going into those positions.
Any further questions? Mr. Smith, the next one?
Yeah, it's appointment of Public Works Labor Timothy Simmons. We're going to do that as a suspension of the rules. He has accepted the offer that's been discussed through the Human Resources Department in the mayor's office, and if maybe the mayor has anything he wants to add to that.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't have, nothing other than he's starting today.
Okay.
So.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Smith on this item? Mr. Smith, your next item?
Resignation. There's been a resignation in the Public Works. Laborer Matthew Harris has resigned, and so that's just a motion to accept his resignation, which will be on the agenda.
Okay. Any questions on this item? We can move on to the next, thank you.
There's the retirement of firefighter paramedic Frank Ogil. That, too, is on the agenda as a motion to accept his resignation, and he's been here a long time. I will turn this one over to the mayor as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, firefighter Ogil has been with us for 31 years, so this will be a well-deserved retirement for him, and did a great job while he was in service. We wish him the best.
And I believe that there is a retirement celebration taking place?
Tomorrow at 1:00.
Tomorrow at 1:00 PM at the Fire Department, if you want to wish him well. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to Mr. Cause, the Public Safety and Health Committee. Mr. Cause, your first item?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just have one item to discuss for tonight's city council meeting, and that's the donation of $3,975 from the American Legion Post 211 to the city for the purchase of six barricade devices for use at city parades. So you'll notice, first off, that the number is $4,500 on the agenda. That number has been modified down to 3,975. Chief Monar spoke with the company on this, and they have waived the freight cost of $5.25, and that's the reflection, the difference of the price. So 3,975, and in our packet, we have a copy, or we have the information of what these devices are. They're called STAR barriers, and as you can see, they're metal. They're used on parade routes to prevent cars from entering the roadway. Unfortunately, we see it far too often now with cars entering crowded parade routes, and the damage that can be done. This is a tool to help prevent that, and this is something that the American Legion, who participates in our parades and also in other public events, wanted to make this donation to the city. What they are doing is making the donation for the cost of it, and then the city will then be purchasing these items. It's a little bit cleaner and easier to do it that way. But if you take a look at these STAR barriers, this is, the order's going to be for two sets of three, so each set is three, so it's six of these total. And the idea is that we get this passed tonight. It'll be enough time to get these ordered, and we can put them to use for this Memorial Day parade. Thank you.
Very good, good ideas. Any questions for Mr. Cause? Mr. Cause, thank you very much for interacting with the police department and getting this together quickly, and with the American Legion. Okay, now we're going to go on to legislation. We're going to go up to the third reading. Ordinance number, Mrs. Rosmarin, can you please read the first part, the title only, of ordinance number 25-52?
An ordinance authorizing a donation to Village Project and declaring an emergency.
Are there any questions on this particular item, which we're going to have next time, Mr. Zubers?
Just a comment, this came out of the committee. We had a presentation by the Village Project, and we decided to make a donation. It was not in the original budget, so that's why this has been pulled off the agenda probably about a month ago after second reading, so that we could pass the appropriation that I talked a little bit more about. That's another one of those things that's in the adjusted appropriation.
Thank you, sir, for the explanation. Any further questions? If not, okay, we're going to go on to ordinance number 25-67. Mrs. Rosmarin, can you read by title only?
An ordinance adopting the Avon Lake Urban Forest Management Plan.
And I'm the sponsor of it. Are there any questions about that particular one, because we can go into more detail at the next meeting? This is the third reading on it. It is something that the Ohio Department of Natural Resources has requested all municipalities to adopt. We never have. This is a management plan for our urban forest. Okay, saying none, we will go on then to resolution number 25-68R. Mrs. Rosmarin, by title only.
A resolution adopting the Avon Lake Tree Commission Strategic Plan.
Yes, this is also a third reading, and the reason why there's an "R" there is that there's a little bit of a mislabeling. Again, Ohio Department of Natural Resources has requested that every city that has a tree commission put together a strategic plan and have council adopt it, so that there's actually a plan in place and we can move forward. And both the previous management plan and this one had to do with the urban forest on public lands. Okay? Any questions? All right, we'll move on to the next one. By title only, ordinance number 25-69.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance, chapter 1070.02, municipal park rules.
Again, I'm the sponsor of this one. It's the third reading for it, and it's adding several things to this particular ordinance. One, in the past, you used to say director. Now it will say urban forester or public works director, so it defines who is responsibility. The second part is, it's going to add an opportunity to be part of Plant a Tree, Grow a Legacy program. So if you want to celebrate something in your life, or you want to remember a loved one, donations can be made to the urban forestry projects. It will not go towards salary or benefits. It will go toward managing trees, planting more trees, taking care of the trees. Okay? Any questions up here? All right, we'll talk more at the next meeting. All right, we're down now to second readings. Resolution number 25-75, Mrs. Rosmarin, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the Finance Director to disperse the jobs growth incentive program awards for tax year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Yes, this is a second reading, and what we are going to be doing, and I thought that there was a suspension of the rule on the second reading at the next meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, because it doesn't indicate it here. There's a suspension of the rule for the second reading, because we'd like to get the funds back to the businesses, the small businesses, as soon as possible. And this is an economic development program that's been in place for a number of years. And if your small business in Avon Lake, if your business in Avon Lake, it's not to be small, if your business in Avon Lake has grown, and income tax from one year to the next, there's a percentage of your income tax you can receive back. If it has, if it has continued to grow in two years, it will be a higher amount. If it continues to grow in three years, it will be even more, and on and on. So by the time it gets up to four, there is a cap. Our number one employer right now in Avon Lake is Ford Motor Company, and we will get into the details at the next meeting. But it's a wonderful way to support businesses and keep them going here in town. Thank you. The next one, resolution number 25-67R, can you read by title only?
A resolution in support of House Bill, the school, oh, sorry, House Bill III, the School Bus Safety Act.
This is Mr. Cause's.
Yeah, I would just add that we're going to go three readings on this, and that the copy that we have in front of us does reflect the school bus seatbelt language that I had requested last week, and again, this does not mandate seatbelts in school buses, it just gives, provides funding for those communities that wish to pursue that. So that language has been added, and that's the only difference between, that's why there's an "R" next to this from what was presented previously.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cause? Okay, we're going to go on now to ordinance number 25-77. Mrs. Rosmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending emergency transport port service fees in codified ordinance, section 208.01, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Cause's, again, is yours.
Just again, that we're going to go three readings on this, and there's been, I'll have more discussion on this during my council portion of the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Cause? Okay, we'll move on then to ordinance number 25-83. Mrs. Rosmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance to rezone an 11.8627 acre site at the southeast corner of Walker Road and Avon-Beldon Road from single-family residence R-1A and general commerce B-2 to multifamily residence R3 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is for the Harborcrest Residential Subdivision that includes some zoning changes only at this particular time, and there is a public hearing set at the beginning of the regular meeting that we have scheduled shortly after this meeting ends. And the only other thing I have to add is I'm going to probably need someone to sponsor this when it comes to the third reading, because the plan is to have it as three readings. Okay? Thank you.
And then, do you want to add the second bullet point underneath that, that has just recently come in?
Sure, I'm happy to, that there's been a traffic impact study attached in the, in the package that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, we're going to move on then to ordinance number 25-84. Mrs. Rosmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation of a portion of Alameda Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith, this is yours also?
Thank you. This is for a parcel of land that we're going to be vacating over by the Utilities Building, and they have asked for that to suspend the rules because they want to, it's going to be, they're going to add on to their building, and they need the extra land in order for setbacks. So they did ask for a suspension of the rules, so I will be making that motion at the appropriate time.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Smith on this item? Okay, now we're going to go to public input, and the way the public input works is that you can speak on any topic before us for five minutes, and you can see there's quite a few people here, so if you could speak on a different topic, and perhaps somebody before you, if we keep hearing red door, red door, red door, we have really good ears, we hear you, we know that you don't want red doors, for example, but if you could come up forward, and you'll give us your name, you'll give us the city that you're from, and then introduce your topic, and there's three little lights that are up at the podium, we can control them from here. When, they're going to start out at green when you first start to speak, and when you have just?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds left, it will go to yellow, and then you'll note a wrap-up, and when it goes to red, it's somebody else's turn. But everybody will have one chance to speak at this particular time. Does somebody want to come forward for public input on any topic? Come on up, man, and give us your name and the city that you're from.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Urban. I've been a lifelong resident of Avon Lake. I'd like to talk about, first of all, on a side note, thank you for making a donation to Village Project. My late husband and I had meals delivered when he was going through his cancer battle, and it was very helpful, especially on treatment days. But the reason I'm here is my mother, Patty Hudson, lives at 314 Avon-Beldon, and she was pregnant with me when she bought the home, so she's still here. The day before Easter, we had the need to call for an ambulance, so my sister called 911, and we waited, and the squad came by, passed my mom's house. We thought, oh, maybe they had another call. Turned around, came back, passed my mom's house, and by then, my sister went out, was waiting for them, and the paramedics came over, apologized profusely that 911 gave them 313 Avon-Beldon. There is no 313 Avon-Beldon. So I'm grateful they were able to get my mom to the hospital. It was not a life-or-death emergency, but she did need emergency help, but had it been a life-or-death emergency, I'm afraid we'd have a different outcome. Also, back in the winter, I took my dog out, and I saw that my neighbor, two doors down, his chimney was on fire, so I called 911. I wanted to know what my emergency was. I said, my neighbor's, at the time, I thought it was his bedroom window, but I said, my neighbor's house is on fire. What's the address? I said, I don't know his address. I'm at 172, he's two doors north of me. Okay? My next-door neighbor is a paramedic. He came out, said, Evelyn, what's going on? I said, his house is, you know, furnace is, or chimney's on fire. And he said, oh, they called it in, it's 172. So the trucks that were coming were stopping in front of my home. So this is two times that I have called 911, and I want you all to be aware, they are not giving the correct information. And I'm a secretary, and I can't do my job, I shouldn't be there. And as far as dispatch person from 911, the most important job, in my opinion, is to give the correct address. And I want to know, I'd like for you to research, but why can't I call the Avon Lake Fire Department? I've been here my whole life. We used to always call their number, and we didn't have this issue. And I don't agree with having a service if they can't do their, what they're there for.
Thank you, Mrs. Urban.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Urban, you're in my ward, and I will get back to you with those answers.
I'm sorry.
You're in my ward, I'll get back to you with those answers.
Thank you very much.
If you could take my card and email me so that I have your address correct, your email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up on any topic? Give us your name and the city that you're from. On any topic, ladies and gentlemen, don't be shy. Come on up. Looks like you want to come up. Give us your name and the city that you're from.
I'm Jill Breton, and I'm from Avon Lake. I've lived here, I think, 26 years, and I'm following up on the rezoning of going from the single-family and general commerce to multifamily, and I was not aware of any of this going on, so that's one thing, is how is this information communicated to the residents more clearly? I don't remember reading anything. I think I was on the Avon Lake website, and city of Avon Lake website, and found it. But anyway, I'm just concerned about the density of the number of homes that are being planned to go in there, because, one, there's a new development that's just south of Huntington Bank that got put in, that I thought, wow, that's going to be interesting with the traffic, and then we're talking about having it on that other side of the street. So from a traffic perspective, the 83 and Walker Road's already very busy, and also just having that many homes in Avon Lake, it seems like it's changing the atmosphere of Avon Lake. So I have concerns about that as well. And also, there was a talk about the comprehensive plan, which I downloaded, and I was looking at. and I was looking at, I was not aware about any of that either, even though I've lived here for so long, so I need to be more involved. Um, but as far as it being, like, one of the things stated was, oh, people are gonna be, it's a walkable community and walking to town center, um, and if you're targeting seniors who might move into townhomes, they're not gonna be walking to anywhere. So, uh, some of the thinking behind some of the reasons to allow that to go forward, I'm not against development, but I prefer it to be more in line with how the rest of Avon Lake currently is. So, that's it, for me.
Thank you for coming forward. Anybody else on any topic? Yes, come on up, thank you.
Kathleen O'Malley, I've lived in Avon Lake for fifty-five years, and the same home was my starter home will be my ending home. Um, satisfied usually with the city, I am not satisfied with ordinance number twenty-five eighty-three. Now, I know you wish that the same people not talk about one topic, but I feel rather strongly about this. We are a tree city, and we make a big deal out of, we are a tree city. And so I drive down eighty-three, and I see what's going to possibly be this new development, and I see all these trees that are going to have to be cut down in order to put this new development in, almost directly across from a development that already has been approved and has gone in. I think the traffic is going to be insane at that intersection. I think all those trees that we're so proud of are no longer going to be there, and if we keep this up, we're not going to be a tree city any longer, and I'm not going to feel particularly proud of Avon Lake, even though I've lived here for fifty-five years. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarity, you can talk on the same topic, but not on the same thing, if everybody talks about the same topic over and over and over again, but, come on forward, you can say whatever you want, we have time. Anybody? Any topic? They come forward?
I always talk here. Yeah, they don't want to listen to me anyway, so. Gerald Phillips, uh, Avon Lake, concerned citizen, want to talk about the budget adjustments. Uh, I downloaded the agenda, I noticed we're increasing appropriations for four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the economic development, for reimbursement, reimbursables, but I can't tell what reimbursables there are, there's no backup, there's no data, and I would like to know what that backup is, plus also, the budget adjustments are being increased by the capital expenditure, I believe, three million dollars, and I'm very concerned of what that's composed of, too. Now, maybe because I didn't go to the budget finance meeting, I don't have the backup, but I would like, when I'm done, a very, very brief, uh, explanation of what that is, so when we get to the general meeting, I can decide on how I split my limited three minutes on all topics, which I think is unfair, and I've been a critic of that from day one. I want to talk about the rezoning. Happened to have to go to my bank on Saturday, Huntington National Bank, whose driveway is directly across where the driveway's gonna be for this proposed development. And, in the course of conversation and chit-chat, one of the managers, we start talking about the development. Well, they won't be here because they don't want to be a critic, and, you know, they're a business person, so they're not gonna come and complain about the fact that they're opposed to it. They're not in favor of it. You know, I go to the bank, whether it's, whatever day of the week, okay? Could be during the day, could be at one o'clock, eleven o'clock, uh, on Saturdays. I have a very, very difficult time when I do my banking, exiting onto eighty-three. It takes me, I think the last, I think it took me three, four minutes just to get out, because the traffic comes from the south, from I- ninety, comes from the north, through the intersections, the lights are, are there, and it's almost impossible to get out, okay? It's very difficult, and, and, and to make the turn, you know, especially if you gotta make a left-hand turn, because then you gotta go against both traffics. You know, the right-hand turn is not so bad, because all you care about is the northbound traffic. So, it is a terrible intersection. I'm sure their traffic study is inappropriate, hasn't been extensive, because if they're gonna do a traffic study for that area, then they should've looked at the comprehensive land use plan and the focus area, and determined what the future expansion of that, of that whole concept. Otherwise, you just waste fifty thousand dollars on that comprehensive land use plan. Mr. Shamir is always talking about economic development, a long-range plan for the whole city, the whole city. All we hear about is Lake Road. Well, we got, you know, town center's been a sore, for twenty years I lived in there, and before the twenty years I lived in Avon, you know I've been before council and a critic before. So, I lived in Avon for twenty-two years. So, town center has been bad for my forty-two years in Lorain County. So if you, we didn't want to be concerned, you should be just as equally important about the town center and the rezoning, and this seriously affects it. And when I get into my public comment on the public hearing, you'll hear a lot more. So, uh, this is totally inappropriate. So, uh, we could talk about, the other, you know, Mr. Smith says he's gonna defer the engineers' three readings, so I, I won't need to talk about that today, because I'll get a couple more occasions on, what, six more meetings, if we talk, or four more meetings? So, uh, I think that's it, and I even have time to spare.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to come forward? Come on, on any topic, don't be shy. Yes, sir. Your name and the city you're from, hello.
I'm William Wyler, um, I'm at five-four-nine. So, this development is right next door to me. Um, I've had the opportunity to talk to Pulte, and also, actually, my neighbor's here, Thomas here also. I don't see a, I'm, I'm not a, I don't see a problem with it. Communities have to move forward, housing has to move forward, I'd rather have houses there than a Dollar General. So I don't mind the rezoning of it. As far as trees goes, most of those trees that are back there are in my property, and I won't be cutting them down anytime soon, um, unless they start dying out. That's pretty much it for me.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on any topic? Come forward.
Yeah, Mary Schneider, one-four-three Avon-Belden Road. I was gonna make these comments at the public hearing, but I'll guess I'll just do it now, so I don't have to stay up super late.
You could do it twice, if you wanted, three times?
I could do it twice, but, I don't know. Anyway, my husband Jim and I strongly urge you guys to vote against ordinance twenty-five eighty-three. It will not contribute to the economic benefit of Avon Lake or to the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Building high-density housing at this intersection will increase traffic, the twenty-two townhomes being built at Sandridge, Sandridge Run, plus the seventy-three townhomes Pulte wants to build equals ninety-three townhomes, which means there'll be at least ninety-five more cars entering and exiting eighty-three, and more traffic at our busiest intersection. And this increase in traffic will be permanent, okay? It's not gonna be a temporary thing. It will make the intersection more dangerous and less walkable, because heavy traffic encourages aggressive driving. The increase in traffic might necessitate having a, another traffic light put in, which could, which would slow traffic and create congestion, or widening the road, which would be disruptive and expensive. The new townhomes are not going to generate enough tax revenue for the city to offset the cost of the services the city will have to provide to them, since the bulk of the property taxes go to the schools, while the rest is divvied up between the county, the city, and other government entities. The city should not accept the traffic study which Pulte commissioned, since Pulte has a conflict of interest in this matter. It should conduct its own study. So I haven't seen what's on your agenda, it's not online, so I don't know what this traffic study looks like. Let's get to the comprehensive land use plan. It envisions high-density housing at this location, but the plan did not consider what impact those would have on traffic. I couldn't find that in there. It wrongly presumes that extensive residential and commercial development at this intersection will make it more walkable. I don't know how it comes to that. Also, this plan does not reflect the will of the people of Avon Lake, because only seven-hundred-and-sixty to eight-hundred people, or three-point-five percent of the population, gave their input into it. I didn't even know this plan existed until the beginning of this month. So I don't know why we can call it, you know, the voice of the community, or the will of the people, and I, I don't think we need to slavishly follow everything that's in it. Finally, I do appreciate the city council's gonna hold a public hearing on this, because it seems like the whole process for approving the construction of new residential housing in Avon Lake is designed to approve developments as quickly as possible, with as little input from citizens as possible, so I'm glad you're slowing this down a little bit, and giving us a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? Looking at the corners? Come on up.
Rob Duncan, Director of Community Development for the county, and, uh, the county commissioners had asked me to just stop by and introduce myself to you, even though I've met most of you, I think. They've kind of taken a different approach this year, they've divided the county, uh, into regions, and I have all the cities, uh, along the lakefront as far as economic development. So if you guys have questions, or concerns, or need information from the county, I've been assigned as your representative from the commissioners to, to be able to try to get those answers for you. I'll leave some more of my business cards with you, I think I've given them to you before, but if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, and, uh, I know I've met with some of you and sat down and talked to some of you, so be happy to do so again.
Mr. Duncan, if you could give them to our clerk, she will pass them out, and, uh, thank you for spending time with me the other day, too. Anybody else on any topic? They come forward? Anybody? Come on up, Mr. Zimmerman.
William Zimmerman. Beautiful Avon Lake, sometimes more beautiful than others. So let's talk about several things. Let's talk about the fact that you are elected officials, and that you represent the citizens of the city. It's not about your agenda, it's not about what you want to achieve, surely isn't about transparency, because this administration hasn't been transparent at all. It's about the rule of law. Our law director doesn't even abide by it. It's one thing after another. I go to a records committee meeting, and they change the speaking time, limit it to three minutes, and put it at the beginning. Council never voted on that. The records commission never voted on it. You guys just did it on your own. You don't care. You do whatever you want. That's not why you were elected. Mr. Koz wants to say he received eight thousand votes. Indeed, that was true, but that doesn't mean he can't be removed from office, in a variety of ways. And I don't understand that. We have an implosion that happens on the nineteenth of December, there's fallout falling over the city because the wind's out of the north and northwest. Mr. Shamir's had a video of it given to him, as all of you received, because it was emailed to you from the people, the citizens of the city, who had that in their backyard. Nobody brought it forward, nobody shared it with the citizens, nobody talked about it, nobody did nothing. It was malfacious. He didn't do his job. He didn't care about the fact that fallout's coming over the city because of the wind direction, instead of waiting twenty-four to thirty-six hours. And then it was gonna be changed, would've been out of the south, southwest, would've went back out over the water like the first implosion. I don't understand how none of you brought that forward. Mr. Shamir was the only one who did. I saw it at his Ward One meeting on more than one occasion, but nobody else cared to bring it forward. Guys were covering it up, didn't want anybody to know. Citizens didn't need to know. That's pathetic. Makes me want to puke that that's the way you do your job. I don't understand it. There's no integrity up here. All you do is care about what your agenda is, just like the planning committee has been trying to push all these developments. We have more people living in our city than I ever thought we would. I've been here sixty-five years. Don't understand it. Just cramming more and more in here. I had someone do a study about the effects on Giant Eagle when Myers was built. Five years ago it's been now. Do you know that Giant Eagle has not lost any revenue whatsoever to the fact that Myers has been built? Are you aware of the fact that they've actually gained market share? And the reason is, because of the development there at Lear and Walker, that southeast quadrant, because more and more people keep moving in there. They need a grocery store that's close, they go there. I find that remarkable, that it hasn't lost any market share to Myers, who's two and a half miles away. Makes me wonder what's really going on here, because the planning committee has done nothing but shove more housing and more housing and more housing down our throats. Guys worried about tax money that bad, trying to generate it that way? Because industry would generate a lot more than what the citizens pay individually.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? There's a lot of people here tonight. Seeing none? One more chance. Oh, come on up. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Give us your name.
My name's Holly Solzer, and I live at five-five-three Avon-Belden Road, so just a few, um, properties down from the proposed rezoning area. Uh, we moved there a few years ago, um, just two, and we love the property, um, it's amazing, I've got two boys, they run, um, and that's why we moved there, just to promote that, um, outdoor, you know, mentality. Um, moved to Avon Lake, we love the trees, um, I agree with a lot of my fellow citizens here. Uh, my husband and I, we would love for the rezoning, um, to remain, remain single-family and not move to, uh, multi-resident. I agree, I, I don't want it to be a Dollar General or residential of that area, um, but would much prefer it to be a single-family home for another, uh, family with young kids to come in and just truly, um, enjoy, uh, the, the open acreage there. So our, my family, we would prefer it to be, you know, a single-family zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward? Any topic? Come on up.
Hi, Pamela Schmitz, Avon Lake. I just wanted to, uh, remind people that there's an election on Tuesday, May sixth. I've been seeing some signs around town in yards, and, uh, one in particular is concerning, is the issue four renewal, um, that it's kind of, um, been together with other two issues on the ballot, and it's a very short ballot this time. But issue four is not a tax increase, it's a renewal levy for funds critical to our city of Avon Lake, like police, fire, recreation, and infrastructure, and it will appear on the ballot as a result of a unanimous decision here. And I just wanted to put that out there because of these signs that I've seen around the city, that this is just a renewal. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on any other topic? Standing up some short. Okay. Oh, yes, come on up, please. Give us your name and the city you're from.
Karen. I live on Delwood. As far as the rezoning from single to multi, I understand we want housing. We want to expand. I don't want to become Detroit Road in Avon. I don't want to become Great Northern on Lorraine Road where we're trying to fix 83 after those houses are up, after people are banging into one another. I know a lot of people, someone was saying when they go to Huntington, I know a lot of people who go all the way through weather to get back to Delwood because they can't get out going north on 83. I know a lot of people, you plan your trips around town to avoid that area the majority of the day or at least go in a pattern so you're only turning right into businesses because you never turn left. I have seen the police trying to get into their own driveway off 83, fly through there because they know if they don't make it quickly, they'll be sitting there for another 10 minutes. And those are an emergency vehicle, just like the rest of us, trying to maneuver an area of town that's become so congested. When they put the subdivisions in on Walker, we didn't know about it. Coming out onto Moorewood, at times you can sit there for five minutes trying to get out to go the opposite direction to turn left. A lot of people go up through Redwood, back down 83 because it takes you less time to do that than to sit there and try and turn left. 83 is just as bad and it's going to get worse. I think we need an independent traffic study, not one done by the builder. But builders could share in the cost of it. But I don't think before we decide on zoning changes, let's fix a road that's already a mess and get a study in there and see what to do about it because it's not going to last the way it is. It's already a problem.
Thank you for sharing. I'm sorry, ma'am. Couldn't you come back up for a second? Could you spell your last name for us? Thank you very much. Sir, come on up.
Tom Wolf, 551 Avon-Belden. Wish my wife was here to talk because I'm not good. She sent me here. But our concern is we are constantly flooding that yard. You've been there, he's been there, and nobody's ever helped us. Now you're going to pile these houses behind us, let them builders push more water towards us. That's terrible. That can't, today we had Cleveland Water Systems come out. Kathy knows the name of it better than I do. To fix that, we have to pay another $20,000 of our own money, again, that we've already put in there with the nature stones been destroyed when you let those houses be tore down next to him. We're fighting water all the time and you've seen it, and you've seen it. No one's ever responded. And the traffic thing, too. You pull out that Mexican restaurant there, you better look once and floor it. Now you're going to add houses around there, the street across the street from us, they've never talked to us about those bushes they were going to put up. Have you been by there to see how that road is going to come out? It's terrible. But that's all I have. And thank you for listening to me. Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Dropping the microphone.
Anybody else? Getting ready to go into another meeting. Anybody else? And we have time for you to speak. Okay. At this point in time, seeing that nobody else has come forward, we are now going to adjourn. We're going to take a five-minute break and we will be back. People watching on television, we will be back in about five minutes. We'll start our conference. 30 seconds.
Oh, yeah. What's for you?
Good evening. We're going to reconvene now into the council meeting. If everybody could stand, we're going to have a pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Ross, mayor, please read the roll.
Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Here.
Ms. Gentry. Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Svetlak.
Here.
Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Public Works Director Lyskewig.
Present.
Thank you. We're going to be moving in just a moment to a public hearing, and I'm going to share with you how this is going to take place because for some of you, this is a first-time experience. You're going to hear me crack the gavel, and it will start the meeting of the public hearing. We will refer it over to the sponsor, who is the representative on planning for city council, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith will read what it is about. He will then be contacting the department head, which is community development, which is Ted Esborn, who will act kind of as an emcee for a bit. He's going to help us know, find out how we got here. And then he's going to toss the speaker over to the engineer for the project. He will come back to Mr. Esborn. Mr. Esborn is then going to toss it back over to the applicant who's going to have a presentation. Then it will go back over to Mr. Smith, who will open up questions for all council. And then he will be opening up comments and questions from the public. When everyone has had a chance to speak, and you know, I'm slow with this to make sure everybody can speak, we will then close the public hearing at that point. You will have another time to speak on this topic at audience participation after our committee reports. The third time tonight that you can speak on this topic, because it's not going to be voted on tonight, will be at the end of the meeting. Okay? Okay. At that point, I'm now opening up the public hearing. Mr. Smith, would you please read what the public hearing is about?
Thank you. The public hearing is about the proposed rezoning of 11.8267 acre site at the southeast corner of Walker Road and Avon-Belden Road from single-family residence R1A and general business B2 to multifamily residence R3 to allow for the development of a 73-unit townhome community that is known as Harbor Crest. And Mr. Esborn, if you would like to begin the public hearing, please.
Thank you, councilman. This project first came to the city's development review committee back on January 27th. It was established there that the procedure for the project would be first, a map amendment or rezoning to R3, which would then be followed by the major subdivision process, which is to say that if the rezone were to be successful, then would start the process that we have with all other subdivisions where we would have a preliminary plat, improvement plans, final plat. That all would follow this rezone. Planning Commission had a work session on February 4th for this project. We then got the application to Planning Commission. It got the ordinary review by city departments. The application went to Planning Commission on April 1st. It was approved by the city's planning commission by a vote of four to two. And now the rezoning comes to city council to uphold or deny the approval or recommendation from Planning Commission.
What's with any conditions?
There are, there was, I don't have the report in front of me, but there was a condition involving density. And I'm sure that somebody, perhaps from the applicant, has that language.
Then you want to bring in your engineer?
Sure. I think that perhaps now we're going to turn it over to the applicant to do their presentation at this point?
The engineer first and then the applicant?
Oh.
The, Mr. Saylor.
Yes, as Mr. Esborn stated, we've gone through the process necessary. Department head reviews. We've tried to respond to a number of comments. Here to answer any questions if you have before the applicant puts to, presents their slide deck they have on this. So if anybody has any engineering-related questions, I'm certainly willing to answer them. But Keith Pulte from Pulte Home, or Keith, Keith Fulkowski from Pulte Homes will be giving the major presentation tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Esborn, do you want to introduce the next person, the applicant?
Sure. I would ask if Keith Fulkowski from Pulte could come up to begin the presentation.
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to present this evening. It is critically important to educate the public about the project, Pulte's vision of the project, the importance of this project, the revitalization of Town Center. So we're happy to put on this presentation. I'll try and keep it, you know, efficient tonight. I know there's a lot going on. But again, very important that the public and everybody understands and is clear about what the project involves. So with that, Ted Esborn just mentioned, you know, we're here asking really one question at this time, and that is to do with the rezone. We are not necessarily here to site plan and talk about the details of that site planning, although we are prepared to do so if questions come up and are happy to answer those questions. But we're, this effort, this request on the table is simply to rezone the property to an R3. And the condition is that the R3 is allowed to have no more than 73 units on the site. That is the maximum number of single-family attached homes that we are requesting to put on this site. So again, just for the public, the location of the project, obviously Town Center area, this is Ward Two. The project, the first order of business for the property has been to lot split and consolidate a variety of parcels to allow for a newly established project boundary. So that process is underway. There have been some comments recently received on that, but otherwise it's been through the process of DRC meetings, administrative in nature, and will next be set to go to DRC. recording at the county. The project overall is 11.86 acres. It's a assembly of parcels that are currently just a vacancy. This is a split zoning project. So, to be clear, everything in the dark blue, above and to the left of the pink line, is currently zoned, mixed-use overlay, and B2 general commerce. Everything to the bottom right of the pink line in light blue is currently R1A, single-family residential. So, with the current zoning, I wanna be very clear about this. The allowable density in a mixed-use overlay district is 25 units per acre, okay? Again, that is the dark blue area to the top left of the pink line. The R1A district, which is to the south of the pink line, is 2.5 units per acre. So as the zoning sits today, I would not even need to come in, ask city council for a rezoning on the property, and I could establish 104 units on this property. 104 units. So on the mixed-use overlay area, I would propose to, I could propose to build, develop and build for, you know, up to 83 units on that portion of land. I could do that very easily by building flat over flat, so resident over resident, four-story buildings, in an area that's already zoned to accommodate that, okay? So I just wanna be very clear about that. I've heard comments in the past about we're trying to maximize profits and things of that sort. We're actually here to ask to reduce the existing zoning density, but allow for something that's more consistent with streetscape. If we rezone it to an R3, that would, yes, allow for 146 units on the property. However, I am asking for a rezone with a very specific condition that will run with the land at a maximum of 73 units. The city law director, law department, has opined on rezoning with condition, and I can talk about that in a second, but essentially, the code supports it. So that is the request at hand. Again, not wanting necessarily to build four-story buildings. The preference here is to have a site design that has a consistent look and streetscape, thoughtful design, two-story buildings throughout the entire project. I would also just maybe point out that the idea of if this project were to be rezoned on its condition, to come back to a city council at a later date to try and overturn that condition, you know, no matter what way the property is zoned, any given person or applicant could come back and ask a future city council to consider a request. So I think what we are hoping that everyone can do is understand what's going on with the project now, why is it important, and, you know, have some empathy towards the idea that this is a good fit for the property. I mean, after all, we're here to discuss with a rezone, is this a good use of the land? And I think through the presentation, you'll find that there's examples that showcase that. New to the code, Navon Lake requires that in a rezone, a traffic study is required. So I heard a lot tonight, people asking, or, you know, asking that we ought to do a traffic study, or some maybe made comments that we've perhaps done a traffic study, but there's no validity to it, or maybe it's not as comprehensive or accurate as it should be. But in any event, there were previous commission concerns that came up. Those are the four check marks there you see at the top, which we've satisfied all those concerns in terms of either proving out through the traffic study that a left-turn lane or traffic improvements to 83 aren't warranted. There were questions about the site planning of the project itself, initially with the DRC discussing to ensure adequate street widths and turnarounds, the private roads to be 22 feet in width. We're going to comply with all of that. Our land plan already complies with that. We haven't submitted the land plan yet, the site plan, because we're not at that stage of the process. Last, we wanted to make sure that the traffic impact study included the consideration of Sandridge community across the street. It does. We've submitted a traffic impact study that contemplates Sandridge community across the street, which is 28 units. So at the end of the day, Pulte's traffic study, no-turn lanes are warranted, and the proposed development can be constructed according to the site plan with no improvements to the area roadways. Don't take my word for it, though. The city has reviewed our traffic report, and they have provided their own feedback, and I've summarized three points and their general findings. The site is expected to generate less than one inbound and one outbound trip every two minutes on average during peak hours. Turn lane warrants were performed for the development entrances, and no turn lanes appear to be warranted. The Harbor Crest traffic impact study generally followed standard practices and appears to have been based on realistic assumptions. So I'm hoping this is providing clarity in terms of what studies we've done, have they been validated, what truth is to those studies. You don't generate an 82-page traffic study report in haste and, you know, just opinion-based. This is all factual information, and again, it's been cross-checked by the city. Aside from all of that, many people probably don't know, but, well, Pulte has various other communities within the city of Navon Lake. In those previous communities, concerns have come up about traffic, some after the facts, well, all of them, in which have been after the fact of general development plan approval. And all of those concerns, Pulte has stepped up to the plate as a partner with the city to try and help ease the concerns of the traffic. This project, I would offer no different. Despite the fact that the traffic study says there are no turn lanes warranted, I have heard the concerns of your council people and the mayor, who are working very hard for you guys to understand your concerns and do the best we can with those. So with that, Pulte wants to offer, in this particular scenario, a left-hand turn into the community. So I won't get into the details of it, but we've worked with our engineer to understand if that is something that's possible to do, and the answer is yes. So we'd like to work with the city to contribute towards a left-hand turn. And Jennifer, I'll send this presentation out to everybody. I want this presentation out there, because I don't want anyone to be less than clear about what's going on with the project. So please, when I send it to the city, feel free to send it to constituents, we're happy to discuss.
Sir, if you could send it to Mrs. Rossmeyer, and she'll make sure that everybody has.
I will do just that.
Thank you.
Another thing I heard at the last meeting I was at, the first city council meeting, were comments around, "We don't want rentals, and we don't want Section 8 housing." Let me be clear, these are for-sale homes. We are not, we don't sponsor Section 8 housing, we don't, we have no interest in building for rent here. These are for-sale, single-family attached homes, okay? So some of these listings here, this is from the previous Planning Commission meeting and, that I presented, to start to unravel, you know, the alignment with what we're trying to offer here with the comprehensive plan. First-floor masters, right? So this is a, they're all first-floor master units, which would insinuate that they're targeted towards an older demographic, not necessarily senior citizens, but an older, I would like to say, active adult. People will certainly still be able to walk, is my hope. I don't think we're gonna sell 73 units to people who cannot walk. This isn't assisted living, this is not age-restricted. We just have, we see people lean towards first-floor masters who are a little bit older in the demographic, and that's important, too, for the sake of the schools with no burdens. I did a little study to see of first-floor masters that Pulte has sold with Pulte mortgages in Navon Lake. Of the last 25 first-floor master homes we sold, zero of those buyers had dependents. So if that's any indication beyond any of the national market research that Pulte does for targeting demographics, this is proof in the pudding in the city of Navon Lake in terms of what we're selling and who's buying those homes. The affordability factors, as stated in the comprehensive plan, affordability is a key issue. When you look at the market statistics, .64 months of supply on the resale market for anything under $500,000, that's two weeks. There's nothing on the market for it. Four to six months would be a healthy, would be a healthy market. So there's a need for it. Only 20% of the, 21% of the active listings in Navon Lake are under 500, and 2/3 of those listings are townhouse. So townhouses are the key to affordability, as I would state. Product diversity, there just isn't anything like this in the city of Navon Lake. The closest thing is Tuscan Village, and they're almost sold out. In terms of community outreach, you know, the most impacted people with this project in terms of residency are the gentlemen to the south here, denoted in green, who came tonight, William Wagner, to speak unsolicited. He came on his own, I had no idea he would even be here, supporting of the product, of the project. This is written communication from him previously, showing that same endorsement. In the blue area, William Hubert, also supportive of the project. So I think that's important. But don't just take their word for it. Pulte went out to market, and we did a survey. We sent a survey to over 2,000 people. 81% of the people that responded to the survey think the community would be well-received in Navon Lake. And I understand there are people here who don't want the project. I'm not dismissing that. But I think I ask the council to consider not only the comprehensive plan, but the public as a whole, and not just the few who are maybe more outspoken, have spent the time here tonight, coming and talking about their dislike for the project. Do you feel the city of Navon Lake needs housing that provides walkability to nearby shopping? That's certainly what the comprehensive plan calls for. 83% of the people said yes, but don't just take their word for it. The owner of the Town Center Plaza has written a letter of endorsement stating he needs the residency adjacent to his shopping area. The number-one request in the city of Navon, Navon Lake, one of them anyway, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they want a shopping center, grocery and Town Center. He cannot find an anchor unless he can get more residencies adjacent. It certainly will help his cause, and he's stated just that in his letter of support here. So again, you know, just as a standalone, looking at the comprehensive plan, much work that goes into that from the city is strategic in nature. It calls for all of the things we're trying to propose on this project. It is in direct alignment with the city's strategy. Missing type of housing, critical densities to support the commercial entities. So I'd like the group to consider that. I spoke earlier about the rezoning request, the city of Navon Lake's legal opinion on that. The city has suggested that rezoning the property with a condition on the land of 73 units is satisfactory, but, and perhaps they don't want or need this, but Pulte is again offering to go above and beyond that with belts and suspenders to deed-restrict the property. In that deed restriction, we would, again, restate the maximum 73 units. We would tie it to the conveyance of land and applicable only to Pulte, and we would prohibit flat-over-flat building types, which is the type of units I just discussed would be possible in an MUO district to actually serve that density on such a small piece of land. So the summary of considerations for the request at hand tonight, I just ask everyone to consider the direct alignment with the city's strategic comprehensive plan. We are, in fact, requesting less density than the property is already allowed to have. Adjacent neighbors, businesses, general public, people we've surveyed are in support of the project. Traffic reporting we've provided has been city-verified, suggests no substantial adverse impacts. A professional developer, builder, mindful of its residents and city partnership, to see the vision of the community from start to finish. We are a national publicly traded company. We are not, we are not a small outfit that goes and buys property, sells it to somebody else. We have a very specific interest in Navon Lake. It is a great town. We're, I'm otherwise excited about this project. It's got great vision. It is a perfect transitional site in terms of stepping down from commercial to residential. So, you know, those are the considerations. That is the extent of our request, okay? It's the rezoning. Nevertheless, we have done site planning already. We have a vision in mind, and we wanna share that, too, if the board will allow me to continue to present for just a few more minutes. Would that be okay?
Yes, go ahead. Then I'd say four to five more minutes.
Sure. So just an aerial bird's eye here, looking at the area. The white, the black and white area over here is Sandridge, that's the 28 units. This is the 73 units for the Harbor Crest project. It has two points of entry and egress, so when we talk about 73 home sites, not everybody's exiting out of one, out of one, you know, entrance or exit, but it provides all the things that the comp plan talks about. Connectivity to Town Center, it'll have a passive park amenity, common area guest parking, long driveways to accommodate vehicles. Community boundary buffers will be protected in terms of making sure that there is a buffer between the existing residential and what we're proposing. It's gonna have almost 40% open space acreage. Here are some renderings based on the land planning that we're doing. You'll see on Avon-Beldon, situated is the primary entrance, I would call it. It abuts the corridor of 83 coming into town. You'll see that this entrance is fairly unloaded. We've situated the water retention basin. I think it'll be quite nice, actually. You're not gonna have building units right off the road. It's gonna be sunken back into the community. So I do think it'll be a nice entry into the, into Town Center. Just a street-level shot. This is the Walker Road community entrance. I talked about a passive pocket park amenity within the community, a sort of sanctuary, if you will, for people to retreat. That's all part of the plan. The floor plans, 23 to 2600 square foot, single-family attached, two-floor plans that intermix, variety of luxury options that go with those, and then just some images here showing you in the built environment what it could take shape to look like, and then some interior photos. Again, I'll make this presentation public, so people can view it at their, on their own time. And then, you know, my architecture is background, as a background, architecture is, I'm an architect by trade, is what I've done all my life, before I was at Pulte. I consider this a staple project. I've got other projects like this that are staple, doing one in Pine Crest right now, right off of 271, right below Pine Crest. These are exciting projects for us. We get a chance to express ourselves with beautiful architecture that'll be good for the city. So these are just examples of that. And then I'll stop the presentation, so I'm not lingering on. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to take city council members through any of our projects, if you're interested to see those, or more discussion, as you like.
Mr. Smith, it's back to you to entertain the rest of council.
Thank you. I do have a few questions, but I'll defer to council members first. Mr. Shamir?
Yes, I was wondering if you could tell us the assumptions on the number of vehicles that would be associated with this development at Harbor Crest?
Certainly. I brought our traffic engineer from GPD, who put together the report, Kevin Westbrooks. He'll introduce himself, and I'd like him to try and help answer any questions revolving traffic.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Westbrooks, W-E-S-T-B-R-O-O-K-S.
Thank you, sir.
With GPD Group. So we're talking, we usually look at things in the peak hours, the morning rush hour, evening rush hour. In the morning, we're talking about 35 trips, and that's total ins and outs. These are based on national standards. There's a manual called the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, depending on what Engineers Trip Generation Manual, depending on what the development is, the size, the number of units. It gives you estimated numbers based on years and years of data. So this is saying 35 trips, which is nine vehicles entering, 26 exiting. That's the morning. In the evening, it's slightly higher with 42 trips, 25 entering, 17 exiting. So in the morning, it's heavier people leaving, evening it's heavier people coming back.
If I may, I guess my, my question was a little more simple than that.
Oh, sorry.
The number of vehicles based on your conceptual development on that property is what? Is it a two times 73? Is it one and a half times 73? What is the number of vehicles that we're assuming based on the demographics that is being marketed to? Are we looking at, I mean, we're, we're talking about some retirees and some maybe younger couples. So what is that number?
We typically don't, as a traffic engineer, we don't study the number of vehicles. It's all about the activity of it. As a guest, knowing that the difference in age ranges could be there, that you just gave the example, it's probably between one and two. You know, some of the older folks, maybe, maybe they share a car. If it's a younger family, they've probably got two for each person. But yeah, we don't usually get into that with analysis. It's all about the movement.
And you have two entrances and exits within the development? So when, when, when you look at the overall approach, I'm, I'm just, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at your, your peak will be 26 out, nine in?
At the evening, evening peak. 25 out, 17 in. Or time, sorry, 20, 25 in, 17 out in the evening. That's the busier period.
And then in the mornings?
In the morning, it's, it's, it's kind of the flip-flop, nine in, 26 out.
Thank you.
Mr. Arnold?
If I could just, yeah, one more question. So we hear a lot, we've been hearing a lot of concerns about 83. There's not really any mention about Walker Road. Like if I lived in that development and I live on it, I live off of 83 down by the high school. It's in, it's on Greenwood. I, there's only, there's only a couple streets that I can get out of my development to get on 83. So in essence, I live on 83. I would see the benefit if I lived in that development. I wouldn't even go out 83 or come in 83. When I go out, when I go out to Walker Road and 83, I make a left, I'm going south, I make a left on Walker Road. And I, if I'm going east, I go up to either Jaycocks or Lear. I mean, that's normal. I mean, once Lear Road opened, I think most of the people in this room that live here avoid 83. And they avoid it on the way home, too. If I'm going west, I go out to Moore Road and I go up maybe 611. But I, I would just ask, and there wasn't a whole lot of talk about the exit on Walker, but I would assume that a majority of those people, even if they live close to 83, would, would make the exit on Walker, not 83. Did you guys, when you, when you talked to Mr. Shamir, were you talking about the exits and entries on 83 or just?
Total, total. So that's the total between the two driveways.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like, we've all lived here so long and, and some people for 55 years, some people for 10 years, but I'm just, maybe I'm missing the boat. It doesn't make any sense to me to get on 83 if they can exit on Walker Road. Just food for thought. I mean, that, that, that's a good thing. I didn't realize that there'd be egress out of Walker Road as well. And that's, that's huge.
Ms. Gentry?
I'd say speak for yourself, Zach, because I have to take a left onto Walker from the landings and it is terrible now. And so that would make it even worse because I think you're right. I think a lot of the traffic will go up to Walker because they'll be taking a right probably to go, or maybe even trying to turn left to go down, to get towards 83. I don't know. It's, so it would be helpful to understand what that mix is, but yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenge either way. It's more cars coming in and out and it's already a challenge. We know that people coming in and out of the bank right now are having issues and it's, I know, the only difficult challenge is that the study doesn't justify how we're feeling. And that's the challenge that we have because we all feel like the traffic is terrible now and it's only going to be worse with the project. But I don't know how you, you're in a tough position because I don't know how without, the data is what the data says. So yeah, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's certainly always a challenge to speak to the emotion and that's why I ask the board to rely on the facts at hand. We have to at some point rely on the data that's provided. And again, if there was a concern about the way in which the data was provided or examined, I would have hoped that the, the city efforts with a third-party engineer that reviewed the traffic study and ultimately gave the same summary as what we already provided, that we, we lean towards what the facts are telling us. I mean, that's, that's the best I can put it. I mean, we have to rely on the facts.
There was one comment on that traffic study, there was a change that it mentioned for the northbound. Do you recall on that study, when you were involved in that study, it said something that it wasn't an impact?
It wasn't an impact from what you guys are doing.
It's stacking issue.
It's a stacking issue, yep. So they did have a finding that there is an issue, but it's not contributing, it's, it's existing today.
Correct. That was, that was in the review letter on the study, yeah.
So I don't know how we as the city are going to address that or if that's in our plan, but.
Anybody else? Mr. Zuber?
If you could go back, I think it was the third slide where you talked about what you could. Back one more? Okay. You, you talked a little bit about how many units could go in here as it's zone today? If you could restate that?
Yep. Yeah, certainly. The dark blue area here to the northwest of the pink line is currently mixed-use overlay B2 general commerce. That allows for up to 25 units per acre.
Mr. Smith?
I have a wish. Let him finish. Go ahead. Did you have anything else?
Well, wait for.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to add simply that if you are within one of our focus areas in the city, and there are three, Town Center, you know, Lear and Electric and the west end of Lakewood, you do have this mixed-use overlay. It is a, an overlay zoning district. You have to go through a prescribed process with planning commission and council to get a mixed-use project approved. And so, you know, it is, you know, it, it is correct as shown with that area, having that mixed-use overlay. I just want to add though, i- it has its own unique prescribed procedure in the Planning and Zoning Code to, to do a mixed-use project.
And I will add to that, that not only that, the planning commission and city council should have the authority to re, restrict densities based on the compatibility of the development with surrounding development, the locale of the overall project, traffic impacts and recommendations from the comprehensive use plan. And that's from, you're talking about the, that potential. I, I just don't see it, it does say it's a minimum of eight units per acre, not the 25 units per acre. And I also think, as I look at the comprehensive land plan, that the, the areas that you showed, the R1A around the outside of it is a majority of it. So I'm not sure that you'd be able to get those densities that you like. Mr. Zuber?
And in the light blue area, how much, how many units could we put in there? Could, could you put in there as it's zone today?
We could put 21 units. And we've, and we've done the study and we can fit 83 flat over flats on the project. My point is just that it is, the zoning allows for that density. It has that allowance to the density. Any land planning project has to go through due process, of course, no matter what you're trying to get approved.
Well, what, what I'm getting at, in the light blue, how many units could you put in that?
21. 21 single-family detached homes. In the current land plan I put together, we could fit that.
What's the acreage?
What's the acreage of that piece?
Yeah.
For the R1A is 8.53 acres.
Okay. Go to the last slide you had there. Okay. So a laudable density, 25 units per acre, is that, that's the darker blue?
Correct.
Okay. So you could put 82 units in there?
I've got a land plan that will fit 82. The zoning allows for 83.
Okay. So you could put 83 units in there and 21 in the other area?
Yes.
As it sits today?
Correct.
Now, council and the planning commission could change that around, but the possibility is for you to put over 100 units in there. And right now, you're asking for the rezone so you could put 73.
Correct.
That, that's what I'm looking at at this point in time. I mean, there is some nuance there, but you could do that today. And I think that the city would have a hard time stopping you from doing that based on the zoning code as it exists today. That's our zoning code. That's what it says you can do. Now, Mr. Smith did read a couple things in the land use plan that you might be able to change it, but that's, but then you're only talking about not that many units. And I'm, that's the point that I wanted to get across is that you're asking for 73 and you could put 104.
Yeah, and that's for the sake of consistency with the street street, what allows to put in something more meaningful on the site that everyone can be proud of instead of having four, four-story buildings on one half of it and single-family residential detached on the other.
Right. Which comes to my other point is that you could put a four-story building in there as it's zone today. Right.
So.
Is that the R1A?
Maybe, yeah, correct. On the MUO area. Just, just one last thought on that then, because there have been comments about perhaps the city giving up on a business, but if traffic is the concern, I, I would just suggest that more business in the area would promote a tremendous amount of, of traffic depending on what it was. I mean, if you've, if you've ever seen a Chick-fil-A drive-through, for example, I mean, I would, I would venture to say that they generate traffic. Any sort of business is gonna, that's gonna be successful and attract a lot of people is likely to present a larger traffic concern, certainly than what's being proposed here.
Mr. Zuber, anything more? Anybody else? I'll go to Ms. Fenderbush. She has been heard of.
Thank you. I'm going to go after this at kind of a little different angle. If you could just keep this slide up and then, and then when we need it, we'll go back to the one right before it with the two colors. So an R1A residence, and I'm reading this from, so everybody can pull it up, it's chapter 2040. It's the Single Family Residential District Regulations and our Planning and Zoning Code. And there's two types of properties that can go onto a 1RA. One is called, one that is permitted, and then you have one that goes through conditional. But they're both allowed on a 1A. So I'm going to go through what this could be if you don't do anything else, all right? So on a R1A, you're allowed to have a family, a one-family dwelling, conditional planned unit developments, senior citizen housing, apartments for disabled, that's conditional use, group homes for handicapped persons, that's permitted. Under institutional, conditional, you could have a place of worship. You could have a school, public, private or religious. You could have a public library or a museum, that's all conditional. You could have a public administrative office, that's conditional. You could have a nursing home assisted living facility, that's conditional. Child daycare centers, conditional. Public service maintenance facility, we could put a public service maintenance facility. That could be our new public works area, John. Public utility transmission and distribution stations, that's permitted. Wireless telecommunication towers and facilities, that's conditional. Funeral homes, that's conditional. Public safety facilities, public safety facilities. Okay, let's think about that. Public safety, that would be police and fire. Okay, that's conditional. Public parks, playgrounds, recreational facilities, that's conditional. Agricultural, including wineries, horse farms, riding stables, et cetera, that's conditional. Golf courses, that's conditional. Cemeteries, that's conditional. And then what I'd like to do, and that's, and that's half of your, half of your properties, you haven't, you don't, you don't own them yet, but if you were to buy them, are listed as R1A today. The other half of them are listed as R, I'm sorry, R, B2, correct? And this is from chapter 1244, for those of you that want to look it up, Business District Regulation. So let's read what a B2 is. Provide areas to accommodate a wide range of commercial uses, including outdoor storage as a conditional use in a manner that does not intrude on residential areas, it says. But it goes on and this is what is allowed. Nursing home assisted living is again conditional. Senior citizen housing apartments for physically disabled is conditional. A B2 permitted is a professional medical administrative business professional office building. You could have a funeral home, that's conditional. Hospitals are conditional. Urgent care clinics are conditional. Veterinary hospitals without the outdoor channels are permitted. And ambulance and emergency medical service is conditional. Retail, let's go on to the retail. Retail in wholly enclosed buildings is permitted. Retail in personal services, hair care, dry cleaners, shoe repair, self-service laundry, I'm just reading this from the code, is all permitted. Small appliance repair electronics is permitted. Financial establishments permitted. Automatic teller machines, whether freestanding or, or on the outside wall of a building is conditional. A restaurant table service would be permitted. A restaurant counter service is permitted. A restaurant freestanding structure is conditional. A nightclub is conditional. A bar, a tavern is permitted. There's more. Outdoor display of mater, of retail, outdoor display of materials for retail sale, that's conditional. Outdoor storage of materials, conditional. Drive-through facilities, conditional. Hotels, motels, conditional. Self-service storage facility, conditional. Automotive sales rental of automotive, automobiles, trucks, that's conditional. Boat sales, rental and charter, that's conditional. Gasoline service station, which may include an accessory car wash, is permitted. Permitted means it's much easier to get. Repair garage service, conditional. Car wash, conditional. Okay, I'm almost done. Entertainment, arts and recreation, membership to sports fitness clubs, permitted. Studio for arts crafts or instruction such as dance, exercise, martial arts, that's permitted. Indoor commercial recreation, bowling alley, skating rink, that's conditional. Theater, conditional. Assembly hall meeting, conditional. Outdoor commercial recreation, conditional. Institutional or other places of worship, schools, conditional. Museums are permitted. Libraries are permitted. Child daycare center is conditional. Public utility transmission and distribution services permitted. Wireless telecommunication towers and facilities, conditional. Public safety facilities, conditional. Public service and maintenance facilities, conditional. Outdoor special events center, conditional. Public parks, playgrounds, recreation are conditional. I think everybody gets the idea of what this could be, other than, other than the residential. I brought the, the front cover and borrowed Mrs. Ross Maron's Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This took two and a half years. And maybe the people in the room were not part of this. And I don't know why you weren't because we had it at the ward meetings, Ward 2, this is in my ward, Ward 2. This was at the, over at Learwood. He was also at Troy. We had it at the lake house. It was at the beer fest. We had it at the wine fest, at the market, at preschool, PTA. They have a child exchange. at preschool, PTA. They have a child exchange clothing, not, not children, they don't exchange children, but they exchange the clothing for, for small children. It was there. We had it at multiple public meetings for two and a half years. We discussed it. It unanimously was passed through planning commission. And Mr. Shamir, you know, you talk about a comprehensive economic development plan, correct? This is part of that. It's the Avon Lake Comprehensive Land Use Plan. If we just toss this out the window, all those people that were involved in it, all the money that the city spent, and it wasn't $80,000, it was closer to $200,000 we spent on putting this thing together, plus all the time, I mean, you're disenfranchising all those people that, that put this together. This is our plan moving forward. The gentleman has checked all the boxes off, as has been said. There's a picture of this area, and the map is showing that to support the businesses at the landings, and also at the new, newly-owned town center, they need additional foot traffic. DeHoff, which is a wonderful developer, it's not you guys I know, but they are a wonderful developer with exciting plans and ideas, are having a challenge finding an anchor store to come here, because their market studies are not bringing in the foot traffic that's needed to put businesses in there. This solves part of that problem. I just wanted to bring it up, because we spent awful lot of time, the years that I was on planning, I represented city council at that point in time, to put together this land use plan, and then to say that we're not going to be going by it. Mr. Smith, I turn it over to you.
Mr. Arnold, you had your hand up?
I actually forgot what I was gonna say.
Ah, yes. The comprehensive development plan is actually a very good document. But within that context, I would recommend that we utilize it and plan around it at all times, not only when it's favorable, and when it's unfavorable, we can't say, well, it's not something that is utilized, we have to update it. So it should be the cornerstone of what we do, not utilizing it only when it's beneficial to the city administration and city council and, and others. So I do agree that's a good document, but it's a good document that should have been used for the past five years, to do economic development and strategies. So we should utilize it across the board. Thank you.
Anyone else? The only thing I would add to this is that most of the R1A property that's in this development is not within the, the box of the town center focus area. Over to the, the eastern portion is not in the town center focus area. The other thing I would say is, if you go back to the other one, if you had eight units per acre, and the 3.3, you're looking at about 24, and you're looking at about 45, maybe 50 units in that case. And also that, a, as I indicated earlier, under 1218.05, which Mr. Esper discussed, that there's conditions to be held on that. That all being said, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Mayor, you gonna wanna add anything at this point?
No, I'd like to hear from the public.
That's where I'm going. Thank you. I would ask the public to come up. Obviously, your statements that you said at the, at the collective committee meeting are recorded and are on record, but I do not wanna discourage anyone from coming up again if they feel the need to do so. So I thank you, and come on up, state your name and address.
Deb Beard, 197 Moore Road, Avon Lake. Number one, Avon Lake is a very unique city. We have only three sides, so I don't think the traffic study, as they always say, all this stuff is always, you know, nationwide. Well, it doesn't go accordingly to our situation, because it is a unique city. We only have three sides. We have two main roads going from west to east, and five going north to south. Okay, with the traffic study, it does not include, the first traffic study, I guess, did not include the area to the south of the bank, did not include that. It did not include the timeframe. This is a business area. The timeframe that this traffic study was done was before, guess what? The businesses opened. So of course, you're not gonna have the traffic that you would have for your businesses, because most of those businesses start at nine o'clock. The traffic study was done before then. And it's both on 83 and Walker Road. So again, you're talking a business area in which you have business from nine o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock at night, because you do have some eateries there that, you know, you have traffic all the time. It is not a really good area. I do go to Huntington, and nine ti, and I live on Moore Road, and nine times out of 10, I have to go south and hit Weber Road to get to Moore Road, because I cannot turn left out of the bank. I do have a question. I was, I was at the planning commission when this came, and I was concerned about the split zoning on some of the parcels. I never understood that, when it happened and why it happened, never got any answers, because there are some business B2s that the parcel is a long parcel, because it's considered an old parcel of Avon Lake. And those were farm homes with large parcels. And so nobody did answer, you know, I do know that there's just a few more in town, but I don't have the understanding as to why they were happening. My other question is, if this gets okayed, and it's an R3 with 73, now if this developer decides that he can't, you know, he decides, you know, with the economy and everything else, that he can't do what he wants to do, does the R3 with the, the restriction of 73, does that continue on with the parcel areas? If not, that's gonna cause more problems.
Thank you. That is one of my concerns, actually, relative to the project, is the R3 zoning and how we're gonna go about limiting it in the future. Mr. Esper, is he still?
Yes.
Relative to the, the midline properties and the zoning, I don't know that that's anything that any of us here have anything to do with, but, uh, anything?
I, I was, I, I don't think so, and it does happen in places throughout the city. There are some properties on the west side of 83 that are split zoned. I think that under the, the current zoning code, the city's not able to sort of newly split zone a parcel, but there are some that sort of were existing.
Thank you.
Could he answer her other question, please?
I did.
No, her other one.
About the zone?
About, about in the future.
If, if it does, you know, if it is, you know, R3 with the restriction of 73, if the developer does not do what he says he's gonna do, and he sells the property to somebody else, that that other person then have the restriction put on him, does that information stay with those parcels? Or does that new person be able to do whatever he wants to the parcel, because it's an R3?
It's a question we've discussed a lot, and I'll disappoint and defer to the law director. I have to. I mean, it's, I mean, certainly, you know, whether this, you know, carries over to a successive buyer or owner. So I would, I would wanna defer to the law director, Ebert, on that.
So he'll have to answer another time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my understanding of it is, is that once you change it to the R3, it's an R3 zone, and there's gonna be these conditions on it. But, you know, my thought was that we do an R2 and allow variances for the extra. But that hasn't favored on this, hasn't yet, because it seems to me that it's always easier to ask for more than to reduce it to less, in, in my experiences. But that's just me. That's, that's not anything legal or anything like that, but that's just my thoughts on it. And that's why I have concerns over the fact that they're requesting the, your laws. Go ahead.
If, if I may, the rezoning will be recorded with the, with the restriction on the land. So that has been stated publicly by Mr. Ebert, the law director, in pre, in previous meetings, unless I'm mistaken, I do believe that was publicly stated out loud. So I just wanted to clarify, your, your answer is it runs with the land, as far as I know? Yes?
Yes, as far as you know, but if a new person comes in, is that restricted?
No, no.
His deed, his deed registered.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
My name, excuse me, my name is Bob Holly. I live on Diamond Head Drive in Avon Lake. A couple of things. Number one, obviously, there's a lot of consternation and discussion of the, the traffic that would be implemented and affected by this building. The gentleman from Polte has talked about the facts and the facts of the studies. The fact of the matter is that those aren't facts. They're based on facts. There are projections of facts about what might happen traffic-wise, but those are projections. They don't become facts until the building is done and the traffic starts moving and so forth and so on. Projections might be very good. They might be not so good. You never know until it really happens. So I just wanna make that clear for starters. Second, I can't quite tell from the maps how far south the development goes. I live on Diamond Head Drive, which is, was south of the land that is, is owned by many of the people that might be selling to make it possible. And there is a little nub of a road called Northville Drive that goes to nowhere right now, off of Diamond Head, that heads north towards Walker. And I think the plan was by Koff that eventually that Hubert's land would be sold, and houses would be built, and that would go all the way up to Walker then. My assumption is that if that's the case, I can't tell exactly where this project goes, whether it goes down to Northville, or Northville might move up to it, and whether that might then also be rezoned for multifamily homes. I'm making an assumption, because I don't understand all of these things, but, but my assumption is that once this is rezoned, if the same developer, another developer comes in and says, well, there's more land south, I'd like, I'd like to do that as multifamily as well, that it becomes a little easier to change the zoning and to make it multifamily, rather than what it currently might be, which I assume is, is single-family. So I'm worried about the future and what impact that has on us, specifically on Diamond Head Drive, both from a traffic standpoint, if Northville Drive connects, as it probably will, and from a standpoint of what becomes of the trees. We talked a little bit about trees, and what a wonderful tree city Avon Lake is. We love it for that. The fact of the matter is, and again, this is a deception on my part, that you knock down more trees to put in multifamily home than you would if there were single-family homes, where a single-family has an opportunity to say, I want these trees left. I don't want these cut down, build my house around them. That's another concern that I think needs to be concerned in this process. That's all I have, other than, thank you, guys. I watch you every Monday night. You're doing great work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Esper, you wanna let them know what the plans are, if there's any plans relative to Diamond Head and its expansion, or lack of expansion?
You know, I think, I remember discussing it in Development Review Committee, just briefly. I would ask if Mr. Filipowski wants to comment?
Oh, we have, we have no, we are under contract with no one else other than the property we're here for tonight, so we, I mean.
But there are, there are some stub streets or things like that in the area that the gentleman referred to, so that in the event something does go forward, there would be some expansion in that area?
And I, I think that's why we raised it initially, but I, I think this is kind of where the conversation's at, is, you know.
Right. Well, just so it's known, so if it comes around, it's not a surprise to folks. It's all, okay.
Mr. Smith, if I could, I spoke to, we, we communicate back and forth, Mr. Arnold and I.
We did, thank you.
And when you go on to the county website, you can see how that property is becoming, if you, this is where they're gonna be building. This is Walker, over here's 83. There is an L-shaped property that comes along the bottom, and there is an L-shaped property that's not part of this, and then the stub. So there would be, this is, the stub, there's gonna be something sometime, but it's not part of this project. You're absolutely correct.
Anyone else in the audience? Go ahead, sir.
We're gonna double team on Diamond Head Drive. My name is Dave Quester.
How do you spell your last name?
With a Q. Q-U-E-S-T-E-R. Also live in Diamond Head Drive. Just to Bob's point on traffic congestion, you've heard a lot of emotion about that. The reality is, there's gonna be another 150 cars. It could be 20 in and out, 30. The fact is, there's gonna be a, a concentration of vehicles, multifamily. Avon Lake is known, and one of the reasons I moved here is a family-friendly, single-family home community. Lots of trees. When you look, and in my opinion, there's enough multifamily already in the city. When you look at the demographics, I think you pointed out, it would not put a burden on the school system. I take the other part. Those people are unlikely to vote for a school levy. They have, they have no skin in the game. Okay? It's an opinion, it's not a fact, but you're gonna have 79 times, 75 times two people who likely will vote against a school levy. And we all know Avon Lake needs to fund the schools. It's one of the reasons people moved to Avon Lake. Also about the trees, I, I think there's some beautiful trees on that land, and even on the land that is north of us, we would hate to see those go. And the last thing I would wanna do is look out my backyard and look at multifamily dwellings that look like apartment buildings. That's not why I moved to Avon Lake. It's not what I, what my family's here for. So that, that's really all I had to say. I just reinforced some of the things you've heard. I think it's inappropriate for the city. I don't think it makes sense for the city. More single-family homes is what we need, 'cause that's why people move here, the schools.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come forward.
Cheryl Sharvat, and I was not going to speak, but I have a question for him and a comment about traffic. We live on Sorento, which is near the police station off of Walker, and as Polte's finishing their development there, I can't think of the name of it, traffic has increased probably tenfold, and now we have lots of crosswalks everywhere. It's almost difficult to drive to know which way to look, but the traffic coming on to Walker, going towards center, is just horrible, actually. But I have a question. If you can enter, egress, you know, come in and go out, will people be able to cut through there to avoid this, this intersection of 83 and Walker?
Well, about the roads, if I may, first, yes, it does, it does have a connection point both on Avon, Belden, and Walker. It was mentioned earlier about the, the burden to the city to upkeep those. They were private roads, not public, so an HOA, HOA will upkeep them, but there will still be access, vehicles can travel through the community to get to the other end. There's no law that says they can't.
It's not gated, so I could, I could come up to try to avoid the traffic lights.
There's no law that says you can't?
Right. And the other thing is, we're supposed to be a walkable city. They talk about that area. Are your ponds going to be dry ponds or wet ponds?
The pond, the area on the southwest corner is set to be a retention pond, so it will hold water. There's a small area on the northeast side that will be detention, so it will, it will not hold water.
And then on across the street, south of Huntington, there's a pond going there. Walking anywhere in that area, now we're adding more wet pond, retention ponds, we will have more. We will have more geese. And there's nothing appealing about walking anywhere in that area. It's going to get worse east of it. And I don't see it as healthy with bird flu. And it's, you're talking about the, the area across where Parkers is. Take a walk there someday. It's just disgusting and not healthy. I don't see it as being appealing, but, and the traffic is much worse. I don't know when you did your study, but as you're finishing that development, it's just, you know, I don't know how sustainable it is, but that's my input.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have one last comment.
Yeah, come ahead. And try to keep your comments to, I guess, to me at this point.
Oh, yeah. The only last thing I want to say is, as far as continuing with the, you know, multifamily development, I grew up in an area where the zoning's super, super strict, so that's where my mindset comes from. So when I hear that, oh, we could build on existing land 102 units or whatever the number was, he addressed it a little bit, that it still has to go through a process. So I would assume that if other people were wanting to put all that on for sure, even though it's zoned for that, it would still need to get approved. And there might be some things that people are proposing that we would not want as a city. So, you know, I kind of look at that interestingly, that how that was positioned there. But I also think with the traffic, I agree with the other people who also followed up, that it's just based on what you know when you're driving down 83. And I live off a Walker Road. So Walker Road is very, very, very busy. And the intersection where I live, or not intersection, where I live coming out of my development, it almost needs a light now. So that's only going to get even busier. And I also would ask, encourage the council to consider, you know, surveying the people of Avon Lake instead of the Polte survey about what they think about this. Because I am still surprised that I did not know about this until this all came up in this public hearing today. So there is some, I missed the comprehensive plan. Like, I don't know how, after you described what you did for it. And I really appreciate all the work with that. But I want to see how can more of the community people really comment on this? So thank you for your time.
Can you say, just a second? Can you give us your name again?
Jill Breton.
Can you spell your last name, please?
B-R-E-T-O-N.
Thank you very much.
Mary Schneider, 143 Avon-Belden Road. I just say, it takes a lot of nerve for Polte to come in here and act like they're performing a public service by having this land rezoned, because it was profitable for them to, to build, what is it, 82 more homes on the mixed-use overlay? That's exactly what they would do, okay? So obviously, they're going to make more money by putting up the 73 $500,000 townhomes than they would be by building four-story apartment buildings. So I'm sorry, I'm not buying what you're selling.
Anyone else, Mr. Phillips?
This lady will go first.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Karen Hur.
Can you spell your last name, please?
H-U-R-Y-N. I think you're going to get your zoning changed. There's no reason not to. We want that instead of apartments. I think the city owes it to the community, though, to check the traffic there. You said you'd put in a left-turning lane. Only benefits the people who live in your development. Does nothing for anybody else in the city that uses that road. Somebody asked if they're going to cut through. I can guarantee you, I'm cutting through your development, because I don't want to go around that corner. I already cut through most of the developments around the city just to get around the city. I think the city council owes it to the people to do a traffic assessment and make the changes. If you're willing to put in a left-turn lane, would you be willing to help expand the road? We need two lanes. When you say other cities have those issues, look at them. They do not have single lanes. They have two lanes. The short area where you've got a turning lane there is totally useless, because you're packed all the way down to the light. You know, it, whatever, the time that it was done, it worked at that point. Nobody's looking at all the subdivisions, all the traffic that's come in. And that's even before they do something with town center. When they do something with town center, how are you going to even get to it? It's, the congestion will make you decide not to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake, Concerned Citizen, an attorney, real estate attorney, an attorney in zoning, attorney in municipal law, certified public accountant. I give my credentials, because this is a public hearing, and I want on the record the fact that I am an expert in real estate development and zoning. And I'm an expert on a comprehensive land use plan. And I have to thank Jennifer Fenderbosch by saying they spent a quarter million dollars on it, and that we should comply to it. And I point to the fact that my esteemed colleague, who's an attorney, Mr. Smith, pointed out that substantially, all of that R1 property isn't in the focus area of the town center, which is in this plan. It isn't in the plan. Now, we can go to the specific page, and we can look at it, but we heard comments that the developer has complied with the comprehensive land use plan. That is absolutely false. And you know that, Mr. Fender, Ms. Fenderbosch. We talked about the animal clinic, where you ignored the comprehensive land plan, okay?
Mr. Phillips, your comments should be addressed to me at this portion of the meeting.
So let's look at it, okay? Two-thirds, two-thirds of that area isn't in there, okay? And if you look at the comprehensive land use plan, okay, it talks about the fact of what should be done, okay? Quote, "The first phase of the proposed concept for the town center would be to establish and create the green open space for the gathering place for residents, for community events, and general socialization." We got the cart before the horse, okay? What we're doing is contract zoning, spot zoning, and we're violating the comprehensive land use plan. We're not following it. Now, if you want a lecture on zoning, okay, zoning's supposed to be for the health, safety, welfare of the community, and it's supposed to be based on a comprehensive plan, not a particular development. So if you read and you look at the map, they talk about the mixed zoning, okay? And it says that the high density should be on the outer part of the town focus area, not on it. Now, let's look at section 1218.04D, mixed use. Residential-only uses shall not occupy any more than 40% of any site subject to an application. So the four acres is limited to 40%. And if he's going to get rezoned, only 40% can be residential. He wants all residential.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Good evening.
Hi. Diane Newcomb, I live on broken-down Suri Lane. I tell you how long I lived in Avon Lake, totally know by age, so. My only comment is, and it probably doesn't really affect you, is when I lived here, or I do live here, there used to be on Walker Road, two houses, and on 83, there was three houses. And they got torn down. And then, I know they had a lot of property there, but I'm just amazed that they're putting all this in where five houses used to be. So that's my, and it probably goes to the zoning board. How it got changed, I, I mean, I'm shocked. I thought it was just residential. I could see them putting in single-family homes there. But, but they're doing now, plus the traffics. I'm going to keep it short. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newcomb, thank you. I did get your email, and thanks for coming forward.
And you know what? You're the only one that responded, so I thank you.
I respond to you. Mrs. Newcomb, I did respond to you.
Did you? Okay.
And I did get two more emails, but I'm waiting to see if they're there, because I don't know if they're here in the audience or not. Yeah, that's, Ms. Snyder was a separate one, yeah. She also sent everybody an email. Then I think the mayor responded to that one.
I don't want to keep beating a dead horse. Ramsey Finlater, broken-down Suri. I'm just kind of amazed that we.
Your name, sir?
Ramsey Finlater. Find.
How do you spell it, the last name?
F-I-N-D, and later, L-A-G-E-R. I'm just amazed that we think that we can put in all those units and only have, what, nine or 20 cars coming in and out at day's time? To me, that just doesn't seem like common sense. Seems like there'll be a lot more than that. And people cutting through to avoid the traffic, which I'll do immediately. I keep hearing about the surveys, where a lot of people were surveyed, and they all just love it. But I don't know who was surveyed, because I haven't run into anybody that was surveyed. So that's a problem. And I don't know if we can rezone this now and change the zoning away from putting in units there. I don't know if that's possible. So I don't know how to find that out, or who I call to find out about it. I'm certainly glad you don't want to maximize your profit. And that's really a great thing, that we're not going to put as many units as we could in there.
I'm sorry. The comments should be toward me.
Comments should be towards you?
Toward me, yeah.
So if, if we want to change the zoning, so we can't do this, how do we go about that?
There's procedures for doing it, and that's what they've started, so they're trying to change the zoning as it is right now. But at this point, that's what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with any other zoning changes that might be done. So thank you.
So the traffic, I'm retired, so I don't go up and down there at the end of the night. But I am up there first thing in the morning in the heavy morning traffic, because I pick up a garage unit and come back to my home, and I go back up there again. So if these houses are going to be 400,000 or 500,000, I don't think there are going to be a lot of retirees buying them. And so it seems to me that the traffic considerations are going to be a lot more than what we were saying. So that's it. That's enough.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Good evening. William Zimmerman. So I have a couple of questions from the statements that the gentleman from Polte had. And as some of my colleagues have said, who responded to make 81%? How do we get that information? Are you willing to share it?
You got it toward me.
I'm facing you. I'm facing right at you.
No, not really.
No, you want my eyes? My eyes can go anywhere.
And I was wondering that myself. I don't know how many people responded.
Right. How many people?
I'll ask them when you're done.
Okay, thank you. And, and then my other issue was, one of the gentlemen who lives right along that way, just south of this land, has talked about water and that there wasn't proper drainage. And he's got flooding in his yard. So how is this going to resolve that problem for that homeowner?
Well, my understanding is that when you put a subdivision in like this, that you take care of your own water and make sure it doesn't go elsewhere. But we'll let the engineer address that at the right time.
Because I feel sorry for that gentleman, since he's saying he's going to have to spend $20,000 to fix it.
Well, it would, and this might only be able to help him if, in fact, there's water coming from that property now just through repairing the rights.
Well, I would hope that the city.
When they do a development, the, you're supposed to retain your own water and get it out of there. So it might help him.
Okay. But my problem is, is I would hope the city would already be on that issue, and somebody engineering would try to fix it if there's a problem underground, instead of making him and I have to dig it all up and do it all himself. I don't think that's fair. I also want to know who reviewed the study? I can't read it from back here. Here I can get pretty close, but my problem is, is who reviewed the study? He said he had a zone study, a speed study, a survey study. I, I don't, I don't remember the kind of study it was, but he said it was reviewed by someone. Police department, somebody else? I don't know who that person is. I'd like to have that information as well.
Okay. Anything else?
Just looking to make sure. I want, one last comment, and that would have to be about, they constantly make a comparison to Chick-fil-A being at this location. I don't think that the planning commission would approve Chick-fil-A at that location. And I surely don't think that that would be something any of us would want, because we all know how bad the traffic is around a silly restaurant selling chicken.
Well, Chick-fil-A's aren't open on Sunday, I know that.
One day.
So, really, who, anybody want to take that one question and answer it about the mayor? Go ahead.
The traffic study? So the traffic study, we contracted with Trans Systems to review that traffic study. So that's who did the review.
Mayor? Anybody else?
Mr. Smith, to add to what Mr. Mayor just said, they're the same corporation that the city has contracted with for the study on the Lear Road, Walker Road, that's over in Mr. Shamir's area in Ward 1. So it's, Trans Systems is a bona fide company, just, just like the company that they went to with the GPD. Thank you.
Okay. Any final comments? Anything further?
You said you were going to ask him to answer my question.
Oh, yeah, well, it's the study. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yeah, this survey is out to market, so the number of respondents currently, I'm not sure what that is. Nor am I certain of the policies of our corporation. Nor, nor do I know the policy with our company in terms of, you know, our willingness or ability to release information, certainly personal information about people.
Sure. If you, if you look into it and let me know, and let me know what we could forward on, okay?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. Okay. My intention on this is that we'll have the second reading tonight. We have a third reading set for May 12th. Thank you. And at this point, I'll close the public hearing.
That's the easy part. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you. We're going to move on now.
Thank you all.
Sir? Thank you. So the approval of the minutes from February the 24th, 2025, council meeting. We've all had a chance to look at them. Any changes, additions, deletions? Seeing none, then they will stand as published. Thank you. And Mrs. Ross, Mary, do you have any correspondence you want to speak to?
I have your correspondence to report. Thank you.
Other members of council correspondence? Look here to my left, here to my right. I know that I received a number of correspondences in the following areas. One, there are some people that are concerned about trees on their, on their adjacent, not their property, on their adjacent property, but the tree is overshadowing theirs with, they feel it's going to be damaged, and they want some assistance with it. If you can contact the community development, that's underneath property maintenance. I've also received, and I've had a number of those calls. I've also received a number of emails about the rezoning, and I did respond back to every one of those individuals. And I did not email all of council, because I didn't want to conflict with the sunshine rule. So I dealt directly with the individuals. Okay, now we're down to the reports section.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I had two correspondents, I should have brought them up in the public hearing, but one was from a young man who was in favor of the rezoning and asked that we start not having so many minimum parking requirements. And then from a young lady who was against it. I'll pass that down to you.
So this is Ross, Mary?
Yeah.
She's going to enter it into the record?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything else? All right, now we're going to move along to reports. Mayor, your report first.
I'll make it short and sweet. We have a long meeting. I'll make it short and sweet. We have a long meeting. I just want to let everybody know that Avon Lake was named the tenth safest city in Ohio by Safewise. This is an organization. It's a nonprofit advisory group that deals with personal security, neighborhood security, and so forth. So, again, we're very proud of our police department, again, for receiving a top safety award through another organization. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Seeing none, we're going to move on now to council president. I want to share with everyone that there's going to be a special council meeting on May the 5th, and the purpose of the special council meeting is to swear in an oath of office for the new police department chief and for the new lieutenant. The next CCM will also be May the 5th at 7:00 PM, following the special meeting. The next council meeting will be May the 12th, and the next meeting that is going to be of interest is going to be this Wednesday. We're going to, city council's going to be reviewing and finalizing up the 220, a review of chapter 220. That meeting will be at 5:30 this Wednesday is the 30th of April. Are there any questions for council president? Okay, I'm going to throw two more things at you real quick. There was a council president workshop that was held last week on April the 24th at the Cleveland City Hall. There were nine communities that came together, as small as Orville to as large as Cleveland, and it was a very needed meeting, going over council agenda items, how to run a meeting, budget authority, economic development. I'm going through the topics that we discussed, along with communications with the administration, the mayor, charter amendments, legislative review, and then there was an open discussion. I also want to thank the mayor for Arbor Day. You've all noticed I've been coughing. I am very allergic to every tree that has pollen out there at this time of year, and I was at the Arbor Day events, and the mayor gave us a wonderful proclamation for that. It was the City of Bay Village that came together with Avon Lake. There were six trees that were planted, and that is the end of my report. Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to the law director.
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize for having to leave. I bloody know them. I'm not sure why, but it kind of came and go. But anyway, I have no report this evening.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the law director? Okay, we're going to move on to Ms. Crossy. Do you have a report from the finance director?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. We're going to move along to the public works director, Mr. John Liskovac. Do you have a report?
Yeah, I just have a couple of items to update council on. We talked during the cert meeting. ALPS Phase One is wrapping up its construction activities with seating completed by public work staff last week. RMH completed their work on the project. ALPS Phase Two will be kicking off next Tuesday with pre-construction meeting with RJ Platten. More details to come on construction schedule and moving that project along. The 2024 Asphalt Street Program, today, it was the installation of asphalt surface course. In conversation with the inspection staff out there today, they're looking about a week and a half or so to wrap everything up and be out of there, weather permitting, as I always state this time of year. But that was what was corresponded to me. Concrete Street Program, contractor finished up the westbound lane, yes, correct, the westbound lane of the project on Stony Brook, and they're working on the eastbound lane, once completed in there, obviously moving to Brunswick next. And finally, currently, the city's seeking proposals for construction for the Walker Midship Moorwood RRFB. More to come on that as we get information.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Liskovac? Okay, now we're going to be moving on to standing committees. I'm going to remind council that if you have any items that have suspension on other roll tonight, you could please explain why during your committee meeting. We're going to start with Buildings and Utilities with Mrs. Gentry.
I missed the, I did receive one communication against the Polte home. I also wanted, so in our last Building and Utilities meeting, we had, we reviewed the demolition ordinance. We're still not quite there. Need some feedback from department heads. Mayor still on that. Columbia Gas gave us an update on their pipeline changing, and we also discussed needing to remind folks that have a ditch, that it's time to clean their ditches out. I also did receive feedback from First Energy about the power outage at Waterside, and I just closed it. So, he said that there was, they sent somebody out. They didn't find, they didn't determine what the issue was, said it could have been an animal for this particular, sorry, I'm trying to find that message. So, he said they're continuing to investigate, but at that time, they did not find what the issue was. Also, received a communication about Parkland Colony and Bonneview Streets that are also in bad shape. So.
Ms. Gentry, I do have a question for you. A number of residents are now receiving mailing from NOPEC about the gas. Do you have anything that you want to talk about, the mailing that's coming to their house?
The mailing saying about the work that's being done?
No, it's about the rates, and so they're looking at apples to apples or compare it to.
Yeah, so they did share, and I believe we've got that communication out on the city site about what the rate changes are. So, both gas and electric are both posted out on our website with those changes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Gentry? Mr. Arnold?
Not a question, but just to talk about the NOPEC increase in the cost. I've said before, I mean, everyone should go on apples, you know, apples compare, to compare your gas and electric. It takes, I'd switch, it takes literally 10 to 15 minutes. If you have trouble, you know, with the website, find a younger person that can help navigate you through it. It's worth the 15 minutes. But I don't know why we have to settle for NOPEC when we have so many other options. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Any further comments?
Sorry, I did want to say, yeah, it's, they had a recloser lock, lockout on that circuit. It's a protective piece of equipment that we have on our system, which is used to prevent large, larger outages from occurring. They didn't find the cause, and he said that it can sometimes happen when there's animal contact, such as a bird or squirrel. And then he was sending somebody else to follow up.
Okay, thank you very much for the follow up. Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on to Mr. Shamir with Communication, Environmental, and Recreational Programming.
Yes, we have four applicants for the EAB vacancies, which there are three vacancies, and we will be conducting interviews of those applicants this week. And then, as Mr. Liskovac mentioned, Avon Lake Place Base Phase One was completed on time and within budget. So, I'd like to congratulate him and his team for managing that project and the completion and the budgetary targets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we're going to move on to Mr. Arnold with Economic Development.
Thank you. No report tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Arnold? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Mr. Zuber with Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We had a finance committee last Monday, April 21st, here in the council chambers. Had several items. First, we approved the communication and technology computer purchase with Simve Systems. We also had, which is a motion this evening, approved the donation of the three heavy-duty wagons for the fish cleaning statement, station. We approved the Vertanis Environmental Consulting invoice, and that was for the air monitoring for the implosion. We also approved the inspection services in a three-to-zero vote for the concrete and asphalt program with our city engineer, Bram Hall. We talked about the budget adjustments, which are on, for this evening. I outlined earlier why that has to be an emergency. Also, with the prior services, the inspection services agreement, those are ongoing inspections at this time. We went over the monthly and the financial and the quarterly financials for the city. We had also had some discussion about, which we had on the collective committee meeting, the military leave of absence for one of our employees. We also had a short discussion on the procurement policy, which I know the finance director and the administration are working on to update that. There were several different changes, and the finance director wanted to go over a full revamp of that. Our next meeting will be on Monday, this coming Monday, at 6 o'clock here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Zuber? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Mr. Smith with Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Human Resources did meet, and the items that came out of the meeting are on the agenda, which we discussed in the CCM. And I also discussed at that time, the items that were going to be by motion, as well as where we're going to suspend the rules on a couple of the motions. We do need to adjust a couple of dates. The date for the effective date for the resignation of Mr. Harris is April 29th, and the resignation for Mr. Ogil is going to be May 1st. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, we're going to move on now to Mr. Cause with Public Safety and Health.
Thank you, Madam President. I do not have a formal report, but one of the items that I intended to bring to tonight's collective committee meeting, which I ended up removing, was the issue of e-bikes here in the city of Avon Lake, and also golf carts, that's all two. I intended to bring that for a discussion to collective committee, but prior to that discussion, we were going to have a meeting with Sergeant Ludwig, who's heading this up at the Avon Lake Police Department, along with current chief Vince Molnar and incoming chief Robinson and other members of the police department and the mayor as well, to discuss this internally first before coming before the body to discuss. We had to cancel that meeting that was scheduled for this past Friday. We are working to get a meeting scheduled as soon as we can. Once we have that internal meeting, we will be bringing that issue to the first appropriate and fastest body that we can to get information out to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Cause. I too have received a handful of residents for golf carts and more than a handful of residents communication about e-bikes. There was an e-bike collision in my ward on Cherry Lane. Thankfully, nobody was hurt beyond scrapes and scratches. It could have been worse. So, thank you for bringing that forward. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I would, I'm seeing more and more of those driving around, and we need to get those under control. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anybody else? Mr. Cause, yes?
Yeah, we're very much aware that it is an issue in the community. We're trying to get this scheduled as soon as we can. But we just want to make sure that when we come out, that we're all on the same page, and we all have the same understanding moving forward. So, we're going to get this scheduled as soon as we can.
Thank you, sir. And we're not the only city that's going through this. All right. Okay, the next is Public Service, which I chair. I wanted to share with you that the next public service meeting is going to be May the 7th. That's next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, at 5:30 in these chambers. We have three items before us. They're all third reading, and we'll talk more about them whenever they come up. The other thing that I am assisting with is that there will be a motion that will excuse Mr. Arnold from voting on three ordinances. One has to do with the, I am having a mental blank here. Thank you. With the money that's going back to the, authorizing the finance director to disperse the job growth incentive. The next one is going to be 2595 and 2594, which both have to do with the contract administrative services that Mr. Zuber is going to be sponsoring for the Asphalt Street Program for the inspector, and also the Concrete Street Program for the inspector. The other item that I'm going to be speaking about has already been handled. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move along now to Planning Commission. Back to you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. We do have the item that was, just had the public hearing on Planning Commission. Otherwise, I don't have a report, other than to say the Planning Commission is going to meet next on May 6th, Tuesday, May 6th, at 7:00 in the evening. And that's where a lot of these discussions of these projects and the like go on, that people should be concerned about, and they can see information about those on our website. Thank you.
Yes, any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, we're going to move on now to Zoning Board. Mr. Mayor, for report?
Thank you. The next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is this Wednesday, the 30th, and there's one case on the docket.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Mr. Shamir with Parks and Rec Mission.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any special committees to report? I'm going to be reporting on the Tree Commission. As we discussed, Arbor Day was the 25th. It's highly successful. There's going to be an opportunity that residents can join us on May the 8th at 1:30 at the Service Department. That's on 83 down by the railroad tracks. We're going to be in the garage that's up against the railroad tracks for about an hour. We're going to be bagging and labeling 75 sapling trees that will go into the Avon Lake Garden Club's plant sale that Saturday. The other 25 are going to be potted up, and they're going to be grown into larger saplings that are going to be available at the Fall Fest. Again, this is going to be the 8th of May. The next meeting for the Tree Commission is going to be on the 14th of May. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Any other special committees? Seeing none, then we'll go on to the point in time where's audience participation on items that are on the agenda tonight. Anybody want to come forward? Say your name, let's see you're from. Thank you. And at this point, there's three minutes. There's five minutes at the end. Thank you, sir.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake resident for 20 years. Want to talk about the rezoning. Here's a map from the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that we spent quarter million dollars on. It says that Mr. Polte's property should be mixed-use, not residential. Residential, according to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, is supposed to be north of Walker to the east. That's supposed to be townhomes. Supposed to be townhomes to the south. On the west side of Avon Belden, south of the bank, there's a T, it says townhomes. R is on the north side of Walker Road to the west, which abunds Buckey Coss Village. That's where the Comprehensive Land Use Plan says the residential should be in the focus area. That was unanimously passed, and you spent a quarter million dollars. So, are we once again going to violate the Comprehensive Land Use Plan? We seem to have a pattern when we want to fit it for developers. We've been over backwards for developers. I'm sorry. You know, and Ms. Fenderbosh, you were on the Planning Commission for many years, and I take offense with Polte saying that are a good neighbor. I've been before this board, Planning Commission, and I talked about Tuscan Village. I said there was the need to do a traffic study how many years ago, and they ignored it. They could have done it. They put in developments on Walker Road, and they didn't do traffic studies. Now, this city is paying almost $200,000 for a traffic study for the southeast quadrant that should have been bored by the developers. Buckey Coss, who we all know was, since he passed away, he was a convicted fellow, and we've been over backwards. You know, Polte's a good developer, but you know what? I represent developers too. I represent developers too. I oppose developers, but my developers work with the community. They pay for sewer tap-ins. They pay for the sewer assessments. They don't mind. I'm sorry, but Pulte claimed that they're a good neighbor. I don't take it. If they're a good neighbor, tell them to contribute $50,000 for the southeast quadrant. Tell them that if they want this development, tell them to pay 100% of the improvements for widening the roads, putting in the traffic lights like Avon Commons developer did because we opposed them. We made sure that they were a good neighbor and they paid for it and they made millions of dollars. They're going to make a lot of money on it. What, we're going to give subsidies, okay, for another greedy developer like Avon Lake Power Plan? Come on, do your job. Comply with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, okay? Fulfill your oath of office.
Anybody else want to come forward and speak on any topic that is on the agenda tonight?
William Zimmerman. So I'm looking at these ordinances adopting job descriptions for professional engineers with Avon Lake Regional Water. I thought we had an engineer in Gadar. He retired. Mr. Monroe tells me the last day of the month of January. He was then rehired on the 1st of February. He got me information about this that I had an opportunity to read. But I don't understand, how many engineers do we need over there? This is the guy who tapped in illegally and made the connection into the drainage that's now filtering out to Lake Erie untreated. All done under Mr. Zilka's watch. It's a good idea, evidently. Mr. Shamir brought it up in a meeting recently about this because we're going back doing some fact finding to understand what we could learn from this process. Mr. Lickovich has hired an outside third party to do an investigation into the documents and about whether or not it was done for us. So if we had an illegal connection that was done by this engineer who we've retired and rehired, why do we need more? Want to get a senior professional engineer as well? How many people are we hiring to be over at Avon Lake Water? It sounds like a constant flow of three or four people now who all have the same virtual job description. What's the point? Are we killing more trees, more paper? I don't know what we're doing with the Avon Lake Water Regional with more people because we already got a guy who's willing to bend the rules just to put in the illegal connection. And nobody's going after that. I question whether or not this third-party people will find anything of any importance except for the fact that Mr. Gadar said it was okay. We didn't need a permit. Mayor Zilka said, yeah, let's do it. More corruption.
Anybody else want to come forward on any topics on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir.
I would just bring up, I would ask Mr. Zimmerman to attend the Municipal Utilities Board meeting and ask those same questions of them.
I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming forward, like for the best chance. Okay, we will move on now to our motion section. Mr. Zuber, will you take the first motion, please?
I move to accept the donation of three heavy-duty wagons valued at $540 from Hooks for Hunger for the city to use at the fish cleaning station in Miller Road Park.
Thank you. Any further discussion by anyone? Yes, sir.
Just that we had had discussion on this at the Finance Committee and at the prior collective committee meeting.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Koz, will you take the next motion, please?
Thank you. I move to accept the donation of $3,975 from the American Legion Post 211 to the city of Avon Lake to purchase six barricade devices for use at city parades.
Thank you. In discussion?
In discussion. As I mentioned during the collective committee meeting, this is a donation of $3,975 from the American Legion. These devices are called the Star Barriers and they're used to prevent cars from entering the parade route. It's a safety measure and we're very grateful for the American Legion to make this donation. They are actually donating the money and we in turn will be ordering them. And by passing this here tonight, we'll be able to get these ordered and get these into use for this coming year's or next month's Memorial Day Parade. So thank you, American Legion, for this kind donation.
Absolutely. Anybody else on the, for the discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Smith, take the next motion, please.
Thank you. I move that we accept the resignation of Public Works Laborer Matthew Harris, effective April 29th, 2025.
April 29th, okay. Just a moment. That's correct. April 29th is correct? Okay. Okay, thank you. In discussion?
We discussed this in the CCM. He's moving on.
Thank you. Any further discussion by anyone? Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Smith, will you take the next motion?
I move that we accept the resignation, I guess, due to the retirement of firefighter paramedic Frank Ogil, effective May 1st, 2025.
In discussion?
Thank you. We discussed this as well in the CCM and he served us for 31 years and the mayor gave him accolades and there's a...
Thank you. Any further discussion by anyone? Yes, Mr. Zuber?
Yes, I've known Frank for probably about 55 years now and I want to thank him for his service.
He's a good man. Yes. Okay, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll take the next motion. I move to permit Mr. Arnold to be excused from voting on ordinance number 25-75, 25-94, and 25-95 pursuant to codified ordinance 220.19B. In discussion, there are clients of Mr. Arnold's and there would then be a conflict, so we're going to excuse him. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
It was 25-75 and what were the others?
25-94 and 25-95.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Now we're down to the legislation, the third reading. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-52.
An ordinance authorizing a donation to Village Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2552.
In discussion?
This is the third reading of the donation to the Village Project. We had them in several months ago to have discussion at a collective committee meeting. Last year, we also did support them with a donation and this is a group that serves Avon, Avon Lake, Bay Village, and West Lake for people that have cancer. What they do is they bring meals to their home and deliver them to anybody, to them and their family, anybody who's going through cancer and going through treatment.
Any further discussion by anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Now we're down to the legislation, the third reading. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-67.
An ordinance adopting the Avon Lake Urban Forest Management Plan.
Thank you. As I had said earlier, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources recommends that all municipalities develop and implement an urban forest management plan to effectively manage trees and the land on which they grow. The Avon Lake Urban Forest Plan is a long-term investment in Avon Lake's tree canopy through efficient and effective tree care, strengthening tree planting to maintain species diversity in the public tree population, equitable preservation, improving the character and aesthetics of neighborhoods and quality of life. There's a mission statement, there are goals. The goals are maintain the health and vigor of all trees, plant the largest suitable tree at maturity for the site, achieve a fully stocked urban forest. Objectives, there are four. There are actions that are spelled out that the city would move forward on and there is actually a plan that the Public Works Director with his urban forester would implement. Any further questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read the resolution number 25-68R, by title only.
A resolution adopting the Avon Lake Tree Commission Strategic Plan.
Again, this is the third reading. The Avon Lake Tree Commission Strategic Plan was recommended to be put into place by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and it's the very first time that the city has actually done this with the Tree Commission. And the plan, when adopted, has a vision, a mission statement, goals, objectives, and an annual review. There are seven action statements. There are action with implementation, the seven. And again, this is put together with the help of not only the Tree Commission, but the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Forestry and Mr. Liskovik. Any further questions? Excuse me, seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
A resolution authorizing the finance director to disperse the jobs growth incentive program awards for tax year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, that one has passed also. We're now down to second readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Resolution number 25-75.
A resolution authorizing the finance director to disperse the jobs growth incentive program awards for tax year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, that one has passed also. We're now down to second readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Resolution number 25-75.
A resolution authorizing the finance director to disperse the jobs growth incentive program awards for tax year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
A resolution in support of House Bill 3, School Bus Safety Act.
Mr. Koz?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. This is the second of three readings on this resolution to support House Bill 3 at the state level, which means we implement and expand key school bus safety features. I will go into this in more detail at the third reading as well, but this did come out of the Public Safety and Health Committee meeting and it has been discussed at the CCMs as well, too. And I believe Dr. Bregley is going to join us next week and also discuss this as well. So there'll be plenty of opportunities to point out the features in this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koz. Any further discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Zuber?
Yeah, as I had requested in the past, that at the third reading, this be read into the record in its entirety.
Thank you very much. Note has been taken. I think it's a good idea also. Anybody else have any further discussion? Okay, we're going to move on then to orders number 25-77. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending the emergency transport service fees in codified ordinance section 308.01 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Koz?
Thank you, Madam President. This is again the second of three readings on this ordinance number 25-77. This, the fees, the transport fees have not been adjusted since 2001. Chief Etsa brought this to the Public Safety and Health Committee meeting and was able to make a comparison to what our fees were to what are surrounding communities for this and as such, the proposed fees are in the copy of the legislation that is in front of everyone. So I will talk more into depth about this again next week, but just so the public is aware, and I think that they are, these fees don't affect residents as they're being transported. So this does not go to that. So I could talk more about it next week, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Koz about this particular one? Any of the newer council people? No? Okay. We will move on then to ordinance number 25-83. Mrs. Rossmarin, by title only.
An ordinance to rezone an 11.86, 8627 acre site at the southeast corner of Walker Road and Avon Belden Road from single-family residence R-1A and general commerce B-2 to multifamily residence R-3 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. This is the second reading of the rezoning. This had the public hearing this evening and I would again ask that a council member
This is, again, the second of three readings on this ordinance number twenty-five seventy-seven. This, the fees, the transport fees have not been adjusted since two thousand and one. Chief Peta brought this to the Public Safety and Health Committee meeting and was able to make a comparison to what our fees were to what are surrounding communities for this, and as such, the proposed fees are in the copy of the legislation that is in front of everyone. So I will talk more into depth about this again next week, but just so the public is aware, and I think that they are, these fees don't affect residents as they're being transported. So this does not go to that. So I could talk more about it next week, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cos about this particular one? Any of the newer council people? No? Okay. We will move on then to ordinance number twenty-five dash eighty-three. Mrs. Rossmarin, by title only.
An ordinance to rezone an eleven point eight six, eighty-six twenty-seven acre site at the southeast corner of Walker Road in Avon-Belden Road from single-family residence R dash one A and general commerce B dash two to multifamily residence R dash three and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. This is the second reading of the rezoning that's had the public hearing this evening, and I would again ask that a council member who would like to support or to sponsor this legislation advise the Clerk of Council. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, Mr. Smith, I am going to mention that the paper that we have in front of us that lists the zoning, there's an error, where it says R one, it should be saying R one A on each of these. And R one has about fifteen thousand square feet, and R one A, if my memory is correct, is about twelve thousand square feet. It is a different type of...
I'm looking at, on the agenda, it says R one A.
Sir, look what I'm looking at. Sir, can you look at me on here?
Oh, on the ordinance itself.
On the ordinance itself. We're going to have it updated, so it'll say R on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, any discussion for Mr. Smith? Yes, Mr.?
No, I just have some discussion. Obviously, we talked about this at length this evening, but I wanted to say that I'm in favor of this development due to the traffic study that they submitted to us, and also us validating it or verifying it with our consultant that is currently doing the traffic study. So I guess I'm confused because people ask for traffic studies, but then if the developer provides a traffic study, we can't say that's a good traffic study. But when another develop, when another already built development asks for a traffic study, you know, we pay for that, I don't know, when it was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But these are the reasons why I'm in support of it. I think that development is, as I mentioned, will be full of empty nesters. I've been at some other developments within the city that have empty nest communities, and I can tell you that my in-laws live in one of them, and there's not as much traffic as you think that comes in and out of those communities. If they don't build these empty nest multifamily units, they could become single-family units that would potentially have, you know, larger families or have two or three people that are driving within a household, and they could create much more traffic issues than empty nest communities. I'd also say that, as we all know, there's a housing shortage. Sorry, it's getting a little late, ten, ten tenths, I'm trying to get through this, but there's a housing shortage, not just in Avon Lake, but across the country. There's many reasons for that housing shortage. In my field of, in the business I'm in, I talk to a lot of developers, a lot of contractors, and every, everyone tells me that there's a housing shortage within the U.S. and across the world, and there's many reasons for that. But I think that if we were to build more, and I understand that, I think someone mentioned that, well, this is, you know, these will be two older people, and they might not, may not support the levees, and I just, I don't, I don't agree with that. I mean, they're moved, usually when you move to that communities, a lot of times you live in Avon Lake, and you live in a single-family home, then you move into a first-floor master suite. That's what I would do. Just give me a second here. There's two, there's two ways to get into development. We're talking about seventy-three houses or seventy-three units. If you want to go into a city that has real traffic, I think we all know how bad Avon is. I work in Westlake, it's ten times worse than Avon Lake. People say how awful the traffic is here in Avon Lake, but we all know we can go to just about any other community on the west side, and it's far worse than it is here. My other comment was that, you know, it's all, my other concern or comment when I hear people say, there's too many houses here in Avon Lake. Well, fifty years ago, there was about twelve thousand people here, and there was some people here that lived here for fifty, sixty years. What makes us so important, you know, that we can't allow anybody else to move in our community? I'm sure we have a double, triple the amount of traffic that we had fifty years ago. So I just, I don't see any issue with it. It's not some huge development that we're trying to put in. It's seventy-three units. It's a need in our community. We always talk about people trying to buy a single-family home here, staying here, raising a family, you know. Obviously, starter homes are hard to come by here in Avon Lake, but they're hard to come by in any community on the west side at this point. I just think that this is something that we, that we have to encourage our, our community and our, the contractors that build in our city to keep building these, because when people move here, they don't want to move. They like it here. There's a reason why it's impossible to find a home in Avon Lake, because everybody wants to move here. I think that's a good thing. We obviously attract a lot of people that want to live here, so I say build them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions on this? Mr. Shamir, please.
Just wanted to clarify with respect to traffic studies and the conversation about the area south of Walker Road and east of Lear. That traffic study was an integrated traffic study to understand flow throughout the system, and that is typically what is required when you develop a whole area. And the flow of traffic, and this is something that I've, that I'd like to understand more from Holti, the flow of traffic in and out is one component, but how does that impact the cumulative flow of traffic? And that is something that I don't see here. And whether the study is reviewed as a single component, it requires a system-wide understanding of how the flow of traffic will move through that section of Avon Lake. I mean, it's what, it's what the residents want to understand. So it's not just a traffic impact study, it's a traffic impact assessment. It's an assessment of the full system as it pertains to that whole section of road, what comes into it, what comes out of it, and at the different peaks. So that is something that I'm, I will like to see, and that's what I just wanted to make sure that I get clear. Thank you.
Mr. Arnold.
I just, and I appreciate that, I'm not going to comment on that, but I had one other comment, too. If we're lucky enough to get a grocery store at Town Center, that is by far going to generate more traffic than a smaller subdivision. So I think when you look at the whole process itself, and I know that, well, that's what it should be, it should be a grocery store. We haven't had a grocery store there for twenty years, but I just feel like some, some people say, well, we want new business, we want this, we want that, but, you know, with growing, with a community that's still growing, there's going to be more traffic, and there's going to be a lot more traffic if we're, if we're lucky enough to get a, get a grocer at Town Center, which I pray that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. The comment that I'd like to make is twofold. One, we've talked about people of a certain age group, which I fall into, and I consider myself not invalid at all, and a strong walker, and somebody that's very active in the community. My husband is also. And this would be like an ideal location if we chose to downsize to move into. And as far as not supporting the schools, my husband and I voted the second day that we were able to, both for the schools and for the other ballot initiatives for the city that would, that would improve and help to keep the vitality of our services moving forward. Just because somebody reaches a certain birthday doesn't mean that they're going to stop helping with the children and the school system that is there. I don't even have grandchildren here, mine are all out of state. So I just wanted to say that. And the other thing that has not been mentioned is the other end of the spectrum. There are professional young adults that are without dependents that are also looking for townhouses. And I know this because I have neighbors that are in the real estate area, and they're being contacted by companies saying, we're bringing so-and-so in at a high salary level, we're looking for homes in your area where they can, they can walk for entertainment at night, they can get on, they can get to the highway I-90, and they love the lake. So I, so this, I see how this could fulfill those needs, but there, no one ever talks about the other end of the spectrum. And the last thing I want to say, and then I know Mr. Zuber doesn't want me to keep talking, but the other thing that I want to say is that I moved into Avon Lake in the Lays. When I moved in, there was a lot of open space, and within ten years, there were eleven different developments up and down Jaycocks Road and around that area. And why should we prevent somebody else from moving in when we had the opportunity to live in this wonderful community? Mr. Smith, I'd be happy to sponsor this legislation for you, sir, at the third reading. Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith? I would be happy to sponsor this legislation for you. You're welcome. Okay, anybody else moving along? We will move along now to ordinance number twenty-five dash eighty-four. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation of a portion of Alameda Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, I move for the suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Smith.
I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash eighty-four.
In discussion.
As an emergency measure.
Thank you, in discussion.
This is a project that the utilities has been working on. The vacation is necessary in order to allow them to expand their building for services to the city and to provide them with enough, I believe with setbacks, so that they can move forward with their project.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone on this topic? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the rule, please.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Now we're down to first readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-five.
An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-five dash nineteen R two appropriations for fiscal year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber.
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Mr. Zuber.
I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five eighty-five.
In discussion, sir.
This was voted out of the Finance Committee last week by a three-to-zero vote. This makes some budget adjustments, adds some things in that we needed to do, such as the fire trucks, some other legal expenses that are reimbursable, the village project, different things that were not put in the original budget, plus some other adjustments.
Thank you.
And we should be, we should be seeing this probably every three or four months, another budget adjustment similar to this.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Any discussion from our Finance Director at all on this topic?
Uh, no, thank you.
We're good to go? Okay. Mrs. Rossmarin, the rule, please.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. We're now on to ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-six. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of professional engineer in Avon Lake Regional Water and establishing the qualifications and duties for said position.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, this is the first reading of an ordinance that the Utilities Department has asked us to set forth regarding the position of a professional engineer in their department.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? I would like to mention that this is a non-exempt position. It is unclassified. The immediate supervisor will be the Engineering Service Manager. Any further discussion? Seeing none. We will move on then to ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-seven. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of senior professional engineer in Avon Lake Regional Water and establishing the qualifications and duties for said position.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. This is the first reading of the request of the Utilities Department for a job description for a position of senior professional engineer. Thank you.
Thank you. In discussion, this is a non-exempt status. The civil service status is unclassified. The immediate supervisor is the Engineering Service Manager, and this particular position will supervise the engineer, professional engineer, the infrastructure technician specialist. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the next one then, which is ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-eight. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job descriptions for the position of Business Development Director in Avon Lake Regional Water and establishing the qualifications and duties for said position.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. This is similar to the other request for a job description for the position of Business Development Director in the Avon Lake Municipal Utilities.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, this is a exempt status. Civil services are unclassified. The immediate supervisor will be the Chief Utilities Executive. The position supervised, Engineering Services Manager, Facilities and Asset Manager, Business and Financial Court. Seeing no further discussion, we will move on then to ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-nine. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance fixing compensation ranges, wage, I'm sorry, ranges for Avon Lake Regional Water non-bargaining positions, repealing ordinance number twenty-three dash one ninety-three and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, this is the first reading of legislation twenty-five dash ninety. The ranges for the various positions are set forth in the ordinance. You can see them there from the Chief Utilities Executive at eighty-two ninety-one an hour to one twenty-one point one one an hour to the Senior Professional Engineer and the rest of them that are there.
Mr. Smith, there is a miss, you misspoke, you called it twenty-five dash ninety, it's twenty-five dash eight-nine.
Yes, I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Anybody else, any further discussion? So for the ranges? Okay, we will move along to ordinance number twenty-five dash ninety. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of Deputy Clerk of Court in Avon Lake Municipal Court and establishing the qualification, qualifications and duties for said position.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, I move for the suspension of the rules requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, this is the, an ordinance that is setting forth the job description for Deputy Clerk of Court over in the Municipal Court that Judge Manning has asked us to pass.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, Mrs. Rossmarin? Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
This is passed. Ordinance number 25 dash 91. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance confirming the appointment of Buddy Byers as Clerk of Court in, in the Avon Lake Municipal Court, establishing the rate of compensation for said position and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you. It is passed. Uh, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. This is the, uh, ordinance to, uh, confirm the ma, uh, the, uh, Municipal Court Judge's, uh, appointment of Buddy Byers as a Clerk of Courts in the Avon Lake Municipal Court, and she's going to be paid, paid $75,000, uh, a year. Uh, three fifths of this is paid, uh, from the city and two fifths, uh, from Lorraine County Treasury.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you. This too is passed. Um, ordinance number 25 dash 92. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance confirming the appointment of Michelle Miller Parks as bailiff in the Avon Lake Municipal Court, establishing the rate of compensation for said position and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Evan, for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
It is passed. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. This is confirming the appointment, uh, by the Municipal Court Judge of, of Michelle Parks as the, uh, bailiff. Uh, she's gonna be, be paid, uh, six, I, I lost it. $68,952 per year, again, three fifths by the city, two fifths by the, uh, Lorraine County Treasury. This also gets rid of the $200 a week, uh, stipend that Ms., uh, Ms. Parks was receiving prior, uh, to this time while she was the acting, uh, Clerk of Courts. And this is a, uh, non-exempt, uh, wait, uh, it's non-exempt, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? Um, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Ordinance number 25 dash 93. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance confirming the appointment of Timothy, Timothy Siemens as laborer in the Public Works Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Uh, Mr. Smith?
I move for passage of, uh, ordinance 25 dash 93.
In discussion?
Thank you. This is the appointment of Timothy Siemens at the, uh, rate of $28.36 per hour as a step one, uh, to, uh, work as a, a, uh, laborer for the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? Saying none. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Now we're at ordinance number 25 dash 94. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amended ordinance number 24 dash 122 for construction, observation, and contract administration services for the 2024 asphalt street program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
It is passed. Um, Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25 dash 94.
And in discussion?
Uh, this is to amend the contract for Bram Hall, uh, for the 2024 street program services, inspection services for the asphalt portion of the, uh, street program, for the work that needs to be finished up for, uh, from last year's program for this year.
Right. It's about five weeks worth of work to do. Yes. Mr. Shamir, your hands up?
Yes. First of all, I'm wondering why this was not on the CCM as there is no venue to discuss the situation. The other thing is, is this, for example, on the asphalt program, is this thirty, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-five in addition to the thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars that was approved last year? Or is this the amount that is replacing that number?
Mr. Zuber, do you want to answer? Should I turn it down?
You look at the legislation, the amount, the additional amount is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for a total now of sixty thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. The original amount paid was thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. This was on, this was item number three on the Finance Committee for the Collective Committee Meeting. Inspection Services for Asphalt Concrete Street Program.
So one has to attend the finance meeting to get this information because I thought the process was to bring it to the floor of CCM and the CCM was today. So we-
It was on the CCM, sir. It was on the CCM.
It was not. I have my agenda right here and I can show you where I don't have it on my agenda. There is nothing, what?
Number three.
This is the first.
Inspection-
Inspection Services for Asphalt Concrete Program. Where is the material?
If I could answer that, if you look at the very, turn the page, turn to the next page, sir. Okay. If you look at the bottom, nothing is added for a, a one, for a reading for one. It comes from the discussion as all CCM items do, and that's how we get it on.
Well, I would like to make a comment with respect to this. I, as have stated previously, think that you are not able to sit down and have the city engineer award contracts or put this type of work together so that it can be awarded to his own company. And we have done that continuously and we are, we're, we're continuing to do this. So we are effectively, if I may, just a second. When you look at it, we're just passing through contracts. And my issue is not with Bram Hall or Bram Hall's integrity, it's with the process of award. Bram Hall is city engineer. The contract is being awarded to Bram Hall. And that is something that needs to change.
If I could respond, um, back in August of 2024, I sponsored legislation for both the concrete inspector and for the asphalt inspector. And there was a cap on how much money we were going to be spending. And then there was the storm, then there was other weather, and then there was a break with a, with Columbia Gas, and Columbia Gas took too long. So the project had to go into overtime in order to, in asphalt, for example, to beat when the asphalt plans were gonna close. And every time that a contractor is out working on a street, there has to be an inspector there. We want an inspector there to, to protect the project integrity and to protect our residents. The same thing occurs, give me a moment. Same thing occurs with concrete. And what has happened is that the asphalt was used up, the amount of money for our inspections. We have five more weeks of asphalt and this is what the amount of money is. I'm happy that Bram Hall is doing it. Mr. Shamir, I'll tell you why, versus going out for somebody else. Bram Hall knows our city. They have been here. They developed the project, they developed the program, they have evaluated it. And if another year we want a different, we want to take it out for, um, uh, bid, we could do that, but this is the same project in my ward and in your ward that was started earlier. I want the same inspectors there who understand the project. I don't want to bring in a new company. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, having the same company doing the work is the question. We could have gone out and contracted to begin with and brought in a third party. And that is oversight is never done by the engineering. So you have a third-party oversight. That is how it's done in, in the engineering world and in the construction world. You don't do the design and the construction oversight at the same entity. Thank you.
Any else with further discussion? Okay, um, we have a, um, item on the floor and Mr. Zuber has had his description. Um, it's now time for a roll call. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. That has passed. We're now gonna move on to ordinance number 25 dash 95.
An ordinance amended ordinance number 24 dash 123 for construction, observation, and contract administration services for the 2024 concrete street program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. It is passed. Mr. Zuber?
Uh, I move for passage of ordinance number 25 95.
In discussion?
This is to amend the contract for the concrete street inspection services provided by Bram Hall. This is an extension of the contract that was granted last year for the 2024 street program. This increases the contract by eighty-one thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
And this is for 16 weeks, sir?
Yes.
Worth of work. Any further discussion by anybody? Mr. Shamir, please.
Can I understand how we came up with the 10-hour-per-week overtime? Is that based on some planning, some, uh, schedule? Why do we have overtime already stipulated at 10 hours per week? And what is the schedule and what is the pro, program that this is based on? I haven't seen it. I've asked for a road maintenance and road construction program now for a month and a half and I haven't seen it. So I would greatly appreciate if I could see some program that would show me where this comes from.
It's an estimate based on what was done previously. We're basing it on the hours a contractor works. It's an estimate. It's simply an estimate.
So if the money aren't used-
There's no root analysis to come up with a magical number. We're estimating based on the number of hours that was stipulated previously. That's what it's based on. If you don't work it, you don't get paid it. It's an estimate.
Any further discussion by anyone? Saying none. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Uh, we're now at the point of public input on any topic and people have, um, five minutes to speak. Certainly, anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward and you talk.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake, 20 years. My esteemed colleague, Mr. Jeffrey Smith, read 121805 A1, general design principles for the mixed-use district. The design of any development under the MUO district should reflect the mixed-use recommendations of the comprehensive land use plan with the focus of the creation of the pedestrian-friendly mixed-use area. I already pointed out, and Mr. Smith amply pointed out, that substantially all the R1 area is outside the focus area. And this is a study that we spent most, almost a quarter million dollars on, that we unanimously approved, extensively studied, and we're gonna vary from it. Y'all took an off, a note of office to comply with the codified ordinances, which is 121805A1. And if you vote in favor of this zoning, you again are violating your oath of office. I come here not to criticize because I like people to abide by the rule of law. Okay? I'm an attorney. We live in a country, if you don't abide by the rule of law and we disregard it, we're a lawless society. I'm not here just to criticize and tell you guys, you guys don't do your job. You guys take it that way. I'm here to educate you, but you ignore it. And also, it violates the actual design of where the residential should go. Residential shouldn't go where Palti's doing. That's mixed use. And let's talk about what the vision is, okay? Let's read the vision. Mixed-use commercial and retail spaces would hold each corner of the intersection. All four corners supposed to be mixed, commercial, and retail use, not residential, okay? Spaces above could serve as residential or office spaces, okay? And what they're talking about is basically Crocker Park. Look at the diagram in your town focus area for Avon Lake. That's a Crocker Park picture of a mixed-use building. That's not a Palti home. I'm sorry, you know, they build nice homes, but not, this is in the wrong place. So it clearly violates this so-called quarter-million-dollar thing that you paid for. Now, if I had a wastebasket, I'd throw it in a wastebasket and say, if you vote for the rezoning, just throw it away. Okay? You're gonna waste, you're wasting a quarter million dollars of my money if you don't comply with that comprehensive land use plan. I'm a taxpayer, okay? We got an economic develop, uh, director. If he thinks that comprehensive land use plan is inadequate, out of date, then how come he hasn't done anything since he's been in office? Okay? I'm not a fan of Ted, uh, a, a fan of Ted Espar, neither is Mr. Shamir. Now, let's talk about density. I believe Palti has misled what's the maximum density. It's 11.827 acres total, 8.53 is R1A. That leaves you with three, three point, 3.297. And let's go back to some code sections since I'm a code section person and I like the law. Okay? 121804D, 40% maximum residential use, 40%. So 40% of 3.297, you get 1.32 times 25, that comes out to be basically 33 units plus 21, is 54. That's 19 less than what they, uh, than the 73 plus. It's, it's 50 less than 104, which they said they could put in there. That's a lie unless I read the code wrong and tell me I'm wrong. And let's go to 12, uh, 1803C that talks about that the uses that are solely residential that are permitted must be located behind non-residential uses. Their development doesn't comply with that. And the only way that they can have frontage is if on this plan, it shows they have frontage, and this plan shows that all the residential is on the extremities, to the east on Walker, to the south on Avon, build it, to the west on Walker. It's not in the middle, in the corner of the intersection. Come on, read the code, read the comprehensive land use plan, okay? All right? All I want is the law to comply with. It's just an inappropriate thing. And that, let's talk about the traffic study, okay? Once again, we're gonna do a traffic study that's not comprehensive, not taking into the whole town, uh, center focus, and it's not looking at buildup. We don't have buildup, and we don't even have numbers that show what the current traffic is. So I'll be speaking next time I-